Okay, great. Welcome. We appreciate everyone's patience while we did a brief closed session. We are now in our study session. Today is Tuesday, May 28th, 2024. We're in the JATC South Building. We have all seven board members present, and we will start out with our first agenda item, which is a continued discussion of start and end times for 2024-25. We started this discussion at our last meeting, and we have received some additional information and additional feedback. So we will turn the time to Dr. Godfrey and then also invite Mr. Thomas and Mr. Bergerer to the table. Case, we have questions for you.
Can I have Mr. Sorensen come to the table as well because he was... So the last we spoke, we talked about getting feedback from high schools and doing that in a way, from teachers rather, at our high schools and doing that without using a survey as the format. So Mr. Sorensen took to the streets and went out and quickly arranged early morning and afternoon meetings with... Were they all early morning? They were all early morning?
Yeah, they were all in the morning.
All early morning meetings and received some great feedback from teachers. You have the minutes from those meetings. And of course, whenever we talk with the teachers who live the schedule, we get a really good depth and information about the pros and cons of various arrangements. Are there any highlights that you want to share from that, Mr. Sorensen?
I don't, I don't...
I've shared the overview.
Yeah, the overview of...
I think it varies by subject. It varies by school. There's one school that uses the Friday afternoon for professional development time. There are, you know, math teachers are hit pretty hard with a lot of folks during personalized learning time. Some thought that moving to Thursday would bring balance, some about keeping it on Friday and keeping it all contained on one day would keep it kind of... It's better to have only two schedules instead of three that you're dealing with. So I think we had a variety of responses. An openness maybe to a change, but not, not an overall push in a particular direction. Is that a fair way of characterizing that?
Yeah, I think that's fair. It was, it was, it was a good mix of, you know, depending on the individuals that, that were there. And actually, each school's a little unique and challenges that they face within their own schools. Some that still have a tenant school, which has kind of moved into that. So every school is just a little unique to the challenges that they, they deal with during their personalized learning time.
So we're going to, we have... I understand that you may not have that document. Is that right? Okay, well...
It's, it's an email?
It's an email.
You, you have the feedback document emailed to you. We're gonna post, we're gonna...
On the 27th, did you say? That's yesterday.
And it does look like your name is included. At your four Jordan.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
The feedback is simply a summary from each of the visits. There was representatives of, depending on the size, anywhere from eight to 12, teachers in each of those. The tech centers, actually, we had the whole staff on their morning. They were all here at JATC South, so we were able to speak to everybody from both north and south in that particular meeting and get their feedback.
After these conversations, are you still recommending the same change?
We looked at a couple of different options. We have the alternative to move it to Thursday. We also have the option of keeping it on Friday. Our thought would be that the busing stays the same all five days of the week at the end of the day. So it's at 2:25 that the busing happens every day. And whether it's Thursday or Friday, that the personalized learning time is moved to start at 1:25, so it's one hour instead of the hour and 25 minutes that it has been. And that would, regardless of the day that we put that on, then that addresses any safety issues. And that would, regardless of the day that we put that on, then that addresses any safety issues. So whether it's moved to Thursday or stays on Friday, then that 25-minute delay in the start of that personalized learning time would mean that you still mitigate those, those student safety concerns.
I have a question on the, the graph of students that are absent for at least one class period on Fridays. How many high school students do we have?
Um, I would say maybe 12,000?
As an absent?
For at least one class period.
At least one class period, that's right.
Include, I know that it was in the notes, but I just don't remember at the top. Um, would that include people who are absent for extracurricular school excuse purposes? So like if the debate team was going to a tournament?
Yeah, it, it includes any code that denotes an absence.
There is a lot of that. I noticed that in the teacher comments too, that, that there are a lot of groups and teams that are leaving for tournaments and competitions and games and whatnot on Fridays.
14,198 high school students.
How many?
14,198.
So...
Undershot it by a high school, but I was close.
I thought you overshot it. I thought like 12,000. So my next question is, if you were to, I, I don't have children in high school yet. And so if you were to say, I know a lot of sports have games on Thursdays. A lot of tournaments happen earlier on Fridays. Like, would one of these be a solution to helping these students not be absent quite as often? Or not really?
Yeah, and, and that came up, right, in our conversations? And ultimately, we, we do have those kind of activities both on Thursday and on Friday. So it's hard to say that one would help over the other because it depends on the sport.
For example, doesn't JV, like football usually plays Thursday and varsity plays Friday?
Correct. And a lot of our volleyballs, you know, a lot of those are on Thursday. So it's, it really is a mix of, of groups that play Thursday and different ones that play Friday. So either one of those days can be a benefit and a problem.
And I think that there are... You know, I heard feedback from teachers who said, yes, this will provide some balance. And others who said, no, now this throws off my Wednesday. And I know that it impacts families in different ways. I know it impacts different sports in different ways. So I think that whether it's Thursday or Friday, our recommendation is that it moved to, the start of personalized learning time would be 1:25. Uh, that addresses the safety issue. And there are multiple schools. It's, it's, it's most pronounced at one high school. But there are multiple schools where this would, um, help with, help with safety. And there are some who said it's about traffic. It's not about traffic. We have traffic at every school at dismissal. You can be far from other schools and there's going to be traffic. It's the student safety issues when you have multiple schools at the same time that are, that's, that's the concern. But academics are, we're weighing the academics. We're weighing the impact on families. Safety has to be at the top of that list with academics as a very close next and families as a very close next item. So are, we would narrow it down to Thursday, 1:25. Uh, personalized learning at 1:25 and busing at 2:25. Or having that on Friday, 1:25 to 2:25, based on the feedback we received. And, and based on that impact. So I'm open to feedback from the board on that.
And, uh, go ahead, Lisa.
I just want to say, I received one email that said, please vote to keep early out for high school on Fridays.
And I think that's indicative of the problem. It's not early out. It's personalized learning. And that's the whole problem. Of course, if we, if this is just early out, everyone wants to get out early.
So I got more than one. I got hundreds. Mostly because I posted it.
Facebook.
Oh, oh. So not emails, but responses to social media?
Emails also, and people are pretty angry. And, um, I kind of, at first, didn't really care too much. Now I think, well, Friday is definitely regarded to parents and students as my time to get out of school early. And that's the problem. And that's huge. One of the things I was, I was wondering is in Granite and in Canyons, they start school a half an hour later. So school starts at 7:30, but class doesn't begin until 8:00. And I taught in one of those schools and it just is a reason to be late. But I was wondering, what if every day you did that half an hour at the end of the day? Because everyone's already there. Buses roll at the same time. And so you just, instead of letting out at 2:25, you go to 1:55. And you do that every day. It balances the time periods. It makes it easy for buses. It makes it easy for teachers because the time period in class is exactly the same. People are there. I think it also solves traffic issues because kids can get out of there before the buses come in. And so that was one of the things I was thinking. Alpine does it on Wednesday. And they changed it when we did. This is a change since COVID, when we went to early out Friday. Right?
Not early out. It's personalized learning time.
Even me, even me.
What does Alpine do on Wednesday?
They do the same thing. They have remediation.
For, at the end of the day, for how long?
Um, I didn't look at the minutes, but it's pretty similar to ours. But prior, I believe prior to COVID, we did it during the day, right? I think we call it, some schools call it map time or it's kind of similar to what we do in our middle schools.
Yeah, we, our middle schools have that time. Our high schools have it various times. And Brad can give me more details there perhaps. But they, they, they've had times like that, their intervention times. The difference between an intervention time and personalized learning time is that with personalized learning time, you don't have all students there at the same time. So it does reduce the number of students per teacher unless you teach AP Calculus, BC or other, or math, or, you know, some other subjects where you end up with a lot of students that come at that time.
And, and I like that. I like not having every student there. Because it takes care of the, what I observed was a huge babysitting problem because kids are running around the school wanting to skip out the doors and all of that while you're trying to focus on those few kids that need the help. But that was one of the things I thought is what if it happened every day and just a half an hour? And the buses always roll at the same time. So classes would always be the same and, you know.
So shorten every day by half an hour for personalized learning?
For personalized learning. And, but do it at the end instead of Granite, Canyons do that at the beginning. I think at the end, they're already there. There's a higher chance that they'll stay if they're already there. But that's just my, I, I do know people have pretty strong feelings on changing from Friday.
I'm, I'm interested in how many emails that you received that not including the, um, comments on the Facebook post.
Twenty?
Twenty.
Let me get this straight. People have strong feelings about moving it and you're proposing taking it away?
No, not at all. I'm, I'm saying like spread it out.
So not have it on Friday?
Don't have it on Friday. Don't bulk it on one day, but spread it out.
That's what I'm saying. You're proposing taking the hour completely away?
My, my concern after reading all the messages and getting the input that I have is people don't understand what this time is being used for. Clearly. And by spreading out, having it every day, I think that we could focus on why we're doing this time instead of this is just a chance to get out early.
One of the comments in the general comments section of this document, the second bullet point says, should we get rid of it? Talking about personalized learning. Was there, how much thought was put into that? Should we get rid of it? You know, because I was, I was thinking back when, when I was in school. And if I had a problem, if I needed some extra help, I would talk to the teacher and I'd set up a timing and go talk to that teacher after school. There wasn't an hour set aside, there wasn't an hour of instructional time for the entire class. Or each week.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, for a few people to come in and make up an assignment or get extra work or get extra help, personalized help. I'm, I'm curious what would happen if we got rid of personalized learning time? Have we, have we put any thought into that?
Well, there were a lot of ideas uh, that emerged from this discussion. Returning to a virtual Friday. Eliminating personalized learning time. Incorporating it into the day, doing it every day, doing it on a different day. And we have not had the time to explore all of those options. So one, one way of approaching this would be to keep it on Friday. Reduce it by 25 minutes to help with the safety issue. And then take a longer look at what Friday should look like and what the whole week should look like really going forward. And that would give us the time to consider what you're bringing up. Because were you on a block schedule? When you were in high school? Was it eight classes or seven?
It changed. Well, halfway through.
It changed partway through? Um, so... I honestly don't remember. It was deep into the 1900s.
My school was the first to do block schedule.
Reagan was president at the time, so it was a while ago. But, um, I... So if we wanted to consider some other alternatives, I would recommend that we move it to 1:25 to 2:25. We, so it's still in place. And then we, we take time to study it. Because on a block schedule, you are given some intervention time that's built into that class. But teachers listening would, would tell me, yeah, but that looks different for every teacher and we're not always able to accomplish that. So I...
I've wondered also what, what message or what lesson we're teaching the, the students. So, so in their mind, they know at the end of the week, if I am absent, if I miss an assignment, if I procrastinate, whatever, there's some time set aside for me at the end of every week that I can come in and I can get the extra help that I need. And, and maybe I'm oversimplifying it or mischaracterizing how the time is being used. But based on some of the comments that I, that I read in this document, seems like some of the students are using it as a crutch maybe, you know? I don't have to do, I don't have to do my work at the same time that everybody else does it. I have other priorities. I'm going to do those first. Then at the end of the week, I can, I can take care of what I should have taken care of earlier.
Yeah.
So in my experience with, again, middle school, I don't have high school experience yet. But the way that we approach education from the time that I was a student has fundamentally changed. In that we now allow students opportunities to learn from tests and to retake tests and to try and try again. And I think without personalized learning time, that would become a heavy strain on teachers. Because now we would be saying, hey, teachers, how about you create time outside of the school day to implement this program that you didn't choose? Um, I, I really have appreciated the experience for my kids. I think that they, at the end of the day, probably learn more from, um, overall. It's not just, oh, I bombed that one and move on. They go back and relearn and reteach and relearn. But I do think I could see that becoming a heavy burden on teachers if there wasn't built-in time.
And I would like to say also, there are some students who, um, who rely on a bus to get them to and from school and don't have an opportunity to get to school earlier or stay later unless they, they want to walk home, which is always an option. But there are also students whose families rely on their income who, um, have jobs that start right after school. So having it built into the school day gives them an opportunity to make up a test or to get some extra help with, uh, something that they need in a class. I feel like it, it really helps some students that, um... Well, I just think it, it helps some students.
Anthony, is this, is this a heavy lift that you would feel better if the, the board made the decision?
I would say that it would be nice to have the board officially weigh in on that because of the impact on families as well as employees.
As I personally, you've solved the problem I had and that was the safety issue. And so I personally would trust your expertise to make a decision. I don't feel compelled. I don't think that this is a board decision. I don't think we are the ones that have access to... I mean, I know parents are going to have a complaint. But you have access to information that we don't. And I for one would just trust the administration to make this decision and let us know what you've decided. That would be my preference. Unless you say, board, this is a heavy lift. We'd like to be able to say the board made the decision, then I'm happy to do it. But otherwise, I would say, you make the decision and let me know.
I, I think the board has demonstrated that this is important to you. So, uh, I would welcome a vote from the board. But if you want to turn it to the administration, we can make that decision.
And I think of our, you know, our focus is just on solving the safety problems. And, um, you know, we have a recommendation to either just change, change it on Friday by half an hour or move it to Thursday. I, I think, you know, I think if we just stay focused on that, we can just, you know, give our support to one of those options to the superintendent. Um, I think if we want to weigh into bigger issues like changing personalized learning time altogether, either getting rid of it or moving it throughout the day, that we should vote on it as a board because that is of high interest to our community.
So Dr. Godfrey, why did you bring it to us? Was it because of the safety issue or is it because it's not working?
Well, we brought it to you because we bring it to you every year. And the change we made was a safety change. Now, I guess I would say this in response to these three comments. If you think as a board, or these four, or these five, or these six or seven, if you would like to possibly change this next year, if you want, based on the feedback you've heard, you want to take a close look at whether we ought to be doing personalized learning or whether we ought to look at doing things in a different way, then I would not want to do more to change it than to just say, we keep it on Friday, we make it 1:25 and that buys us some time to explore the ideas that you've brought up here today. Because I wouldn't want to change days and then explore what other changes we might want to make. I think the 25 minutes solves the immediate problem. And then we could explore. Does that make sense? So I guess that's what I would really like to know. And I'm very open to that. But I would like to know that before we consider whether to change it to a different day. We can change the 25 minutes. That will impact people. That impacts families who, you know, school doesn't end as early as it has been. And teachers and schools are making great use of that time. But it also increases instructional time on Friday. Does that make sense? I, so I guess the first point of direction before we move forward is, do you want us to explore some other ways of approaching Friday or the schedule generally at the high school level? And if you do, then I recommend that we just keep it on Friday and make it 1:25 to 2:25 is the personalized learning time.
So President, I move that we keep personalized learning on Friday, move it to 1:25 to avoid the safety conflict and direct staff to investigate this issue and bring a proposed, bring a couple of options to the board whenever they have...
And bring a propose, bring a couple of options to the board whenever they have had time to do so.
I'll second it.
Okay, so the motion is to um, change personalized learning time on Friday to one twenty-five. Instead of, it's currently at one, right? And then direct staff to study the issue and bring us back a proposal when they. Feel ready, an issue about how to be effective with personalized learning, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And the extra twenty-five minutes goes into class time, is that correct?
That's right.
Schools have any flexibility with that twenty-five minutes? Like I know middle schools really vary based on which school in the way that they approach like.
That's a great point. I appreciate you bringing that up. Schools have flexible, flexibility on how to use that time, so if they want to create a particular schedule. On that afternoon, they can, but we would provide something for everyone up until one twenty-five.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I can see that working. I, just based on going around, I, I would believe that, I mean. Have a little more instructional time is something they crave on those Fridays. Uh, so I would, I would envision adding five or six minutes to each class period. And, and keeping it, so it might be hard to try to find something else to do, but certainly an option that, that we can put out there. But to Superintendent's point, making sure everybody has something that they're involved in. Up until one twenty-five to avoid any of them leaving prior to that.
Can I walk back for a minute to a question that you started to answer and then I think we derailed you a little? So. The initial proposal. That you had shown us at our last meeting of a shortened. Day on Thursday and an, or a late start on Friday. Would you just tell me what issues did that change help to solve and? Maybe in order of priority. You said safety. Were there other issues that that would solve that this does not?
Uh, for some, there, there are no other problems that it solves definitively. Some would, some would say that balancing A and B day. Results from that, but some say, no, that throws off my Wednesday now. Because then they had. Two A days and two B days in the week that were the same length. And then Friday that was a different length, so. The only definitive result was increased safety. Brad, feel free to chime in if, uh, otherwise, and, and, but the other trade-off is balancing off, balancing out the A day and B day. Giving more time to both days, so there's not a super short day. Because a shorter Friday is maybe. Valued less by students and teachers than. You know, having that extra time.
Yeah, I, I think from the feedback that we heard, I mean, those, those balancing, the other issue is. Is really participation. They, you know, those that really liked the shift to a Thursday felt like. They may get more participation from students because. And, and really in turn, maybe even seeing better attendance on a Friday. Because now those, those class periods are longer and seem more valuable than just the shortened time of which Fridays were, so. So those that really liked seeing things shifted to a Thursday had expressed the A and B balance. They'd expressed the, the participation in personalized learning time because they're not leaving for a weekend. So that they, they might see more participation on a Thursday than they do on a Friday. And, and ultimately seeing the Friday become more valuable because an additional hour of instruction was. Was put back into Friday, so. So those that like Thursday, those were the, the main things that, that they had expressed. As positives.
Can, can I bring up one more issue? Um, is there any reason why PLC has to be done in the morning, like at the middle school level? Is there any reason why that can't be done? In the afternoon?
It just has to do with the busing issues we've talked about before, it is trying to balance that out, but there's no reason it has to be in the morning. It used to be. Wednesday afternoons, uh, maybe ten years ago, thirteen years ago.
So with that exploration, I, again, I get, maybe not everyone, I get a lot of emails and a lot of. Facebook messages about how that's really hard on families when. We're letting two of our three schools out early, but one is going late. It just makes Friday just a circus for families.
If that motion carries, then we, that's part of what we would look at.
The, the future exploration.
Yeah, we, and I think we've. And I think we would um. Yeah, that, that's, that's. If we keep it on Friday, then that maybe opens us up to some other. Change, I, I just hate to make a change of day and then make another change.
And I wouldn't ask for a change now. I'd wanna do it right.
So I have a clarification on the motion. Is the expectation that. A different proposal is brought back eventually? Or what if it's studied and they decide to keep it the same?
And they would bring that back. There, I think there needs to be a report back saying, hey, we've put the best eyes on this that we can, we can and what we're doing is the best. Solution, and so we recommend keeping it. Great, that's the report you've made.
So it's a report back. It may or may not include a new proposal.
And, and I'm, so what are the best eyes on it? What, what does that mean?
Cabinet.
To me, that means lots of eyes.
So more eyes than have already been on it.
Looking at what other districts do, exploring different options. I love what, what Mr. Sorensen did. The minutes that, from those meetings are just great. It's great insights from teachers who've done it. For a few years, for a lot of years at various schools and various subjects. How principals pull together on short notice, a great blend of teachers. I love, when we go to teachers. Like with the kindergarten issue, with this issue, when you go to teachers, you get great information about how to make things better.
And, and so it'd be um, going to a wider array of teachers and. Other school districts and parents.
I think we'd look at other districts, all three levels. Various.
So, but not making changes at all three levels. This is specifically for high school, right?
Well, I think, I think high school is impacted by the other. Schedules because some of the feedback we heard was from families, so. For example, if you were able to switch all of the, don't get your hopes up anyone listening because. The transportation has always been a difficult, not the transportation department hasn't been difficult, but the transportation issues have been difficult. Tricky, have been tricky to, to switch that, that PLC time to the afternoon. But if we were able to do that for the high school. That might mean that the personalized learning is impacted, but that would also impact other levels, so I don't want to limit it to high school, although that's the main focus. Is that?
Yes, thank you.
Fair.
I did, I did do the math Bryce did last time about if we had a late start for everybody, I did it as an early release and took the number of minutes and. It would mean that all buses are running for all levels at one o'clock. Now, high school would get out at twelve, but all buses for all levels would have to go at one o'clock and so it would be impossible, so.
So as you're considering your study, something that I would find beneficial is. Anytime we implement a new program or an innovation. I think we are wise to look at what it looked like before and compare data from before to data now. And say, has this improved student outcomes? Have teachers expressed a happiness? Or contentment with their workplace at a higher rate? Those are questions that I really, that would be so helpful for me. And I, I really appreciate you guys digging up um, statistics on Fridays for me. And that was why I wanted to go back for a bit, because I really wanted to see. Well, we've done some crazy thing, not crazy, some innovative things over the last three years. That have kind of shaken things up. How's it working? Because I'm not trying to reinvent the wheel to look cool. I want to find what is most effective for our students and our teachers. So as you're looking, if you would consider that, I would be grateful.
I appreciate that. We. We always want to bring the best data we can. Sometimes it's difficult to show causation, but if we can even so, show correlation, that's instructive. And um. We never do it to try to look cool. Sometimes we do just by default, but we uh. We're always trying to be intentional about those, those, those new things that we try and. I think that's what you're speaking to, is we need to be really intentional about looking at how things have been working, what's working. You know, Mr. Barnett brought up the question, should we even be doing this? And that's, this, this gives us some time. To, to take a look at that. Should we even be doing it? Should we be doing it in a different way? How might it impact other levels? Anecdotally, every time that Mr. Sorensen and I have talked with students. They can cite specific things they were able to do with teachers because they had that time built into the, to the schedule. But I also heard from teachers who said, students will put off until Friday because they know they can, they, they can find time with me, so. We're gonna, we're going to hear feedback on both sides of the issue and I think it will be good to have some time to explore it.
I just have two comments. Um, I'm intrigued by Mr. Barnett's idea as well. What would happen if we didn't offer it? You know, what would students do? Um, I think it has become a crutch in some cases. Uh, the second thing, my second comment would be how much. After having done this for several years, how much? Do activities and athletics drive this? I'd like to know that.
I haven't talked about athletics in considering this at all.
I think the coaches are using it quite a bit. Am I wrong?
Are, are you talking between the hours of one and two? They, they're.
Or anytime.
During the personalized learning time. Yeah, they, they are not to be having practice, so a lot of schools.
But is that being adhered to?
I believe it is. If it isn't, then I would, I certainly have not heard that, so. I think our principals have been very clear about the expectations of, of, from one to two is meant for personalized learning time. So that same expectation would exist. You know, I, again, I know that's been some of the frustration because they have the class before it, then they have to take the one hour pause and then they pick it up after. You know, so I know that, that has been an expressed concern, but that tells me. That they're adhering to the expectation of kids being available to access their teachers, including our coaches. Between that one hour of personalized learning time.
Comment. Um, personalized learning time, it's a, it's a product offered by the district. We have producers and consumers. The producers of this particular product are, are teachers and, and the administration. And we've heard what they think about it. We've talked to them. And we've gotten their input on how they think it could be more effective. You just mentioned that you have talked to a few students who are the consumers of this product.
Right.
But maybe we haven't done. An exhaustive. Interview with the students who are most likely to want to use. Or, or take advantage of this product. And to me, it seems like that would be the most valuable input. You know, I, I think the other input is valuable, but it seems like the consumer of the product would have. The most valuable input on how this can work for him or her.
Yeah, I, I, I think you make an important point there. I. We, we have lunch most months with the student body presidents to get a pulse on students and then. Mr. Sorensen and I will go to a, a random class afterward, many times, fewer times this year. And just ask for their feedback and ask them some questions. And I love hearing from the students as well about their perspective on things and there was one group of students who. They were surprisingly enthusiastic about that time. It was a. It, I, I just thought it was really interesting how, I, I didn't expect that type of response, so. I think going more in depth with students who are the consumers is, is certainly part of what we would do.
One more question, sorry.
Yes.
Um, in the feedback that we received from Mr. Sorensen, I'll echo everybody else, that was so valuable, thank you. Uh, I'm concerned about our math teachers during this time. Is there a way that we can better support them? They seem to stand out at every school as a group that was really overutilized, not over. Well utilized during this time and overwhelmed.
Well, the way I've heard it described is that there are so many students that it's not personalized learning time anymore. So I, I, I think that.
Which is a win, yay, so many students.
Right, right, but what it shows is a need from the consumer that we aren't meeting. You know, if the wait time at the restaurant is two hours, maybe we need to open another franchise and uh. Sorry, I may be pushing the metaphor for beyond its useful life, but I, I. I, I do think that's a really, that's a hotspot that we need to look at closely is, okay, where we have a ton of traffic. How can we support that uh, more effectively, so?
Math, are math aids available during that time?
I, I hesi- I hesitate to make a suggestion until I talk with math teachers, but I, that. That subset to talk with math teachers specifically, I think will be really important for us to do, so thank you. It's good.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Dunford, second by Mr. Robinson to change personalized learning time on Fridays to one twenty-five. Buses at two twenty-five and then to direct administration to explore options. For, or future options for personalized learning and to explore ways to make that. Potentially more effective and bring us back a report when they are ready.
And, and this addresses our immediate need.
It addresses the immediate need, yes.
Yeah, okay.
I'm all in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Okay, that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Can I continue with start and end times? I appreciate that discussion and we'll. If you have other thoughts, share those with me and we'll do a deep dive and come back with some recommendations and findings. I would like to talk about Ridgeview and Juniper. We have. A proposal that is different from what we brought previously and what it accomplishes is it. Has a start time for Juniper that's ten minutes after Ridgeview. And Juniper ends ten minutes before Ridgeview, so that.
Say that again.
So Juniper would start, excuse me, Ridgeview would start at nine o'clock for younger students. And then at nine, ten, Juniper would start for older students. That means that older students can accompany younger students. To Ju- to Ridgeview and then still be on time to Juniper. That's the current proposal and then.
The last time's proposal was that Juniper would start first and then Ridgeview. Which makes it hard for older kids to walk their kids.
This is the new proposal swapping them?
The new proposal has, here, here's the visual, Ridgeview start ti- start and end time, Juniper start and end time. So that the older students can drop students off at Ridgeview and then go to Juniper. And they'd be done at Juniper to go to Ridgeview and pick up the younger students. There would be a shorter day. Each day at Juniper and a, and a regular length of day at Ridgeview.
So we're taking twenty minutes of instructional time from the older group of students to accommodate. Them caring for their siblings? Is, am I understanding that right?
Uh, it's logistics coordinating with the other school, yes.
And it could be recess time or lunchtime, not necessarily instructional time.
This is due to our requirement for so many minutes, you know, in a day.
We don't have a nine ninety hour requirement any longer.
I knew that, but is there anything else that we're?
Even when we had nine ninety on the requirement, we were way over that, right? This would still.
Most schools, we were over that, right? This would probably take us below that, but we haven't looked at that.
I personally like it. I received a lot of phone calls from people that, um, because it is my area. That were concerned that. You know, the, the, the older kids couldn't accompany the other kids. Is there still gonna be a possibility of a bus that would pick them up then at Ridgeview if they're walking and take them over?
Yeah, we've talked about that. Uh, we haven't worked out all of the details, but. I think there are seven buses at Ridgeview. And so when those seven buses come to Ridgeview and drop the. And so when those seven buses come to Ridgeview and drop the younger students off, then older students who've walked with other students can hop on that bus and go right over. We haven't worked out the logistics, but that's what we're working on. That's part of the, part of the plan.
I do think if you're walking to one or the other school, it's a lot easier to walk to Ridgeview than it is to walk to Juniper. Because Juniper's, one side's a freeway and the other side's a high school. And you have a busy world that we're going to be building right now. It's just harder to walk to that school than it will be to Ridgeview.
The other thing I would say, you know, Ms. George, you bring up a, an important point about the instructional time. This is new. And I think we try it and whatever we choose to do, we're going to need to try. And just like you were saying earlier, say, okay, what are the outcomes? Talk with teachers, talk with students, talk with families, how's this working? And we won't have to wait a whole year to figure that out. I think we'll know in the, you know, in a couple of months what the general impact has been and how's that feeling? And, and that's something that we can look at. But as, as I met with, with teachers and as I've heard feedback from meetings with parents and teachers, there, the concern was about older students and younger siblings and families. And so it's logistics for families that, that we would be accommodating to, to an extent.
I really liked your ranking was safety, academics, conveniences.
Yeah.
I wanna, I want to know that academics are.
Oh, right, but it's safety with a very close second. It's like Olympic swimming. Like one touches the pad and the next one touches the pad right after that. It's just a very close second priority.
I can swallow it if it's for safety.
Safety one, academics two, family logistics three. But all of those are tied in with each other and, and very close. And, and, but I appreciate that connection, that's right.
So at Ridgeview, you're starting at nine o'clock, Juniper would start at nine, 10. What time does Ridgeview and Juniper get out?
So then 9:35 would be end time for Juniper and.
3:35.
Or, sorry, 9:45. It's a shorter day. Shorter even than a Friday at a high school. Uh, Juniper would end at 3:35 and Ridgeview at 3:45.
Okay, any concerns with that proposal? Is everybody comfortable with that decision that's being recommended by our administration? Okay.
I think.
But I can swallow it.
Is there anything, any other questions or things that we need to address?
No, because I'm putting safety in my mind, so it's fine.
It's a sacrifice on instructional time, there's no question about that.
And I was just wondering, for students who do not have siblings, could that time be used productively for them somehow? I mean, I know it's only 20 minutes, 10, 10.
20 minutes, five days a week.
Right, right. I'm wondering if somehow we could make a plan that we could use that productively for those kids that don't have to take younger siblings.
I think that's something that we could, we could look at. I think you could also look at, you know, um, I mean, maybe that means some availability like you're describing, I don't know. Right now, we're looking at the start and end time and the busing times. But what flexibility that might provide for us before and after school, that's a, that's a good question.
I think that would create a challenge with busing.
Especially with the philosophy that the bus picks up the whole family.
How many buses go to these schools?
Seven.
Seven, okay.
So, so if I can interject, is that okay? Really quickly, um, some things that we've talked about, that I've talked about with Mr. Robinson and Superintendent would be, we're comfortable, I think there's about 140 families that have siblings in both schools. That's, that's a rough estimate. So we initially thought, why don't we just, the, the kids who are riding with siblings, um, we would just take them, transport them, they would drop the younger siblings off and then we would take them over to Juniper. I don't see why we couldn't, as a, as a means to provide safe transportation, explore an option of anybody who lives in the walk boundary of Juniper to meet at, at Ridgeview. And then we could provide a type of a shuttle for those students. The one fallback on that, Mr. Robinson, is that we would likely not be able to offer a space available until we find out what that looks like, because we don't know what ridership is going to look like. But, but I do think there's an option for a shuttle. I think most of the kids that live in the Ridgeview, or that live in the boundary of Juniper, Ridgeview's probably more accessible. And so we, we could, we could also, we've looked at providing a shuttle service, not just for the kids who are, if they live in the walk boundary and have siblings at both schools, we certainly would put them on a priority. But I, I honestly think we might be able to provide shuttle service for any student that would like to ride from Ridgeview over to Juniper.
So in other words, if you're one of those 140 families, you could have your older student walk your younger student to Ridgeview and then take the bus over to Juniper. And if you're dropping off younger and older siblings, you could drop them off. And the older sibling, the younger sibling could climb out and go to Ridgeview. The older sibling could hop on the bus and head over. So there wouldn't be need to walk or drive between the two schools. So to your earlier point, Ms. George, we are starting off with a nod to safety. And then we see where that takes us and how that's working out and how we might need to adjust. But we're erring on the side of safety as a starting point while we're figuring out what this actually looks like. Because although there are districts that have the, that configuration, I'm not sure that other districts have anything that's quite like what we're looking at doing, so.
My guess is the space available request at that school is a lot less because most of those kids are being bussed, bussed across Mountain View corridor. There's just a little segment, I think, on the east side that are out of the busing range, so.
I think so too, and I'm not sure where the boundary is down by RSL Academy, it's kinda close.
It's like by a redemption up by.
Okay.
And all of this is kind of a theory until we put it in practice, then we say, oh yeah, about this. Like when the, years ago, when a new school opened and they forgot to order pencil sharpeners and, or trash cans and pencil sharpeners. And the first day, it became inherent, it became apparent right away. We need pencil sharpeners, we need trash cans. We're doing everything we can to be, to think it through, but if there's something that we haven't thought through, we can be flexible. The other thing that could happen is we could align the time at the start of the day because people drop off at various times and then only have the 10 minutes at the end of the day. But we want to start off with, see what the needs are so that families feel comfortable sending an older sibling with the younger sibling and that they won't be late for Juniper, and then we see where we go from there, so.
Can we message that too, that hey, it's a new school, new idea, we may be changing as we go?
Yeah.
I think that'd be helpful.
Yeah. They're really thinking it through, I don't mean to suggest that we've forgotten trash cans. We're, they're really thinking it through and I think things are really going to, things really look good.
Puzzled right now.
Things look good. It was a long time ago, Scott, it was before my time and yours.
Not under Scott's watch.
No, not Scott's watch.
Would never happen.
No, no, no. We get, we have every.
And white paper.
Days of yore, days of yore.
Call that BS, before Scott.
That's right.
Okay, so we're going to move forward with the proposed, uh, 9 AM, 9:10 start times. Okay, is that everything for start and end times?
Yes, thank you.
Right before we.
Oh, that's not everything.
Principal at Juniper has heard this proposal and is not overly concerned about losing 100 minutes a week.
He was part of putting that together, yes. But to, I, I don't want to characterize him as not being concerned as losing over.
Overly, overly.
He was, he was in, in favor of trying this plan, but I don't, that was a group discussion and it was not, it was not over his objections that we bring this to you. But I know that he's concerned about instructional time and safety, but safety first and is this something that you feel comfortable with moving forward? Or should we bring this back on? We can bring it back on June 11th if we need, if we need further discussion or there's concern from the board. The reason I bring it to you is, number one, I bring it every year. And number two, if there are concerns about the direction we're going, like with the high school, then we take a step back and we reevaluate. So I just want to give plenty of space for that, I'm not trying to move it forward any faster than that.
I liked the possibility of same start time, so we'd, so we'd save 50 minutes a week. If that, just on the playground for 10 extra minutes, though. That's hard in the winter.
Yeah. I, I threw that out, that was just my own thinking in this moment, that wasn't something we've vetted or, or looked at, but.
Everybody seems more comfortable than I am and I'm mostly comfortable, so it's okay.
Okay, just, just know that we'll be very open to adjusting that over time and not waiting a whole year, even if we see an immediate need to, and an opening to say, hey, that we can actually make this work and save ourselves some time because sometimes with less time, you restructure that time and can actually get a lot out of the time that you have, so.
Okay, so the direction is still to move ahead with the nine o'clock, nine, 10 start times.
Great.
Okay. Anything else on this topic?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Our next agenda item is a discussion on administrative policy DP 374, employment background checks. We'll have Mr. Dunford start with that, but we'll invite Dr. Lemaster and Mr. Burge to the table. I think Mr. Van Coman will probably weigh in on this too. Mr. Dunford.
There is a balance between making sure you don't hire anyone that could ever harm a student and granting second chances. That's a hard balance. Um, if we weigh too heavily on, no, we're never going to harm a student, that kind of the red side of things, then we fail to give people second chances. And education is all about second chances. I mean, we, we encourage people who have failed a test to try it again and retake the test. And, and it's silly that our own hiring practices don't at least incorporate a little of that. You can't err too much on that side, kind of on the green side, because then you risk harming a student. So trying to find this balance between a red side and a green side. And I'm grateful for staff's effort to say, look, we, we have cleaned up a lot of this and we're trying to move away from the red and into more of the green, and I very much appreciated that. But what I walked away concerned about is that there really ought to be a yellow category. There ought to be a red, we will not hire these people. We feel like this category is a threat to the safety of our students and we're just going to hold a hard line and here are the reds. But I felt ver, I felt like what we needed to do is introduce a yellow. We might, under certain circumstances, hire someone with this past or background if these conditions were met. And so Paul and I got together and said, can we structure this kind of as a red, yellow? And then if it's not listed, it's green. And that's what you see here is our attempt to say, you know what, there are some things that I would throw into the yellow category. They don't preclude you from, from, um, employment in Jordan School District, but it raises a concern. And there are some conditions that we would hope to see met before we employ you. So that's kind of the structure, is we wanted to clarify the reds, the yellows and the greens. If it's not listed, it's an assumed green. If it's listed, it'll either be listed at a, as a red, nope. Or as a yellow, maybe, under these circumstances. And so that's what you're, the, the additions you're seeing since the staff brought it to us are probably more in the yellow area. Yeah, we would be a little concerned with this background. So let's make sure that we're comfortable. And so that was the structure that I kind of went to Paul and said, can we write that structure in? A red, yellow, green type of a system? And then Paul kind of filled it in with all of the details. So I'm going to turn the time over to Paul to kind of fill that out to say, this is what we put, this is how we clarified, some of the reds, some of the yellows. And then the question, we don't presume that this is a complete, we're not presenting a, a completed policy. What we're asking is, are you comfortable with these reds? These yellows and the unstated greens? Is there a red that you think should be a yellow? Is there a yellow that you think should be a red or a green? Is there a yellow that needs a condition clarified? Time isn't necessarily a great condition. Because we've all seen people that don't change after long periods of time. And we've seen people who change very quickly after a short period of time. So if it's a yellow, what would you state, what would you believe is inappropriate? I want to make sure that this condition was met. Okay, drunk driving, they had an arrest for drunk driving X number of years ago. What would be the condition under which you would hire someone in that category? Does that make sense? So that's kind of the structure we impose. I'm going to first turn to Paul and then we'll open it up to the board to say, is there something on the red that should be in the yellow? Is there something in the yellow that should be either red or green? And then is there a condition to one of the yellows that you're uncomfortable with? Paul?
Yeah, just by way of background, I don't want to go through all of these as well, but part of it is, um, it's very difficult to list all of the various felonies or various misdemeanors. I think it's important for the board to understand that a felony, being convicted of a felony is a pretty serious thing because it has to rise to a certain level. Being convicted of a class A misdemeanor can be a very significant thing. Then you start getting into a class B misdemeanors and your infractions and maybe those aren't as serious, unless there's a real pattern or something like that. So, um, by no means am I a criminal law expert, but, but I just wanted to, as, as we went through and tried to identify some, as you can see, there are all sorts of different kinds of felonies that might apply in the educational setting. In addition to sort of what we had listed. So, um, when we went and, and sort of looked at the po, the policy, um, we have a definition section and I've talked with Brent and he, and I sort of agree that maybe we can move some of the, some of what we're trying to define up into our own definition section. So we've added an alcohol-related offense. Now this, um, this, I use this term because it's also referenced in one of the State Board of Education rules when they're looking at licensing educators. Um, obviously, um, any of our licensed professionals would be subject to those. But to the extent we want to incorporate that sort of, um, um, analysis for all of our employees. So I tried to use alcohol-related defense. And, and it, I, I would propose adding not involving alcohol or drugs because you can have a, even though it's called an alcohol-related offense, it's, this is sort of your impaired driving offense. But it also, the alcohol-related offense also, I think the state used alcohol-related because this would be, uh, buying alcohol for underage minors, that sort of thing as well. Drug-related offense, tried to sort of simplify this. It's a little bit difficult because as you can see in all, there are a number of different places where drug-related offenses are set forth in Utah code. This also includes controlled substances, it also includes distribution. So again, we've tried to be a little bit, um, more inclusive on this. Now, when it says related in co-hate offenses, what this is talking about here is I, I didn't know quite how to say this other than to kind of use a shorthand under, under the law. This is, um, and you'll see it below as well for our other offenses. This is if, if you don't actually commit the offense because, but you're caught. Uh, say for example, you, you're attempting to murder somebody, you didn't murder somebody, but you get caught. Or you're conspiring to murder with somebody, or you're soliciting somebody to murder. So they may be serious enough, even though they're not convicted of the actual offense, that you may still want to, um, consider that and certain, um, offenses. And certain offenses still qualify as felonies, because they're so significant, even if you get caught, and you didn't actually complete it, so.
Is that what in co-hate?
That's what in co-hate means, and that's what this Title Chapter, Title seventy-six, Chapter four talks about, and it sets forth by statute which offenses are a felony, which are a misdemeanor, and down that. So it's sort of a shorthand. We also tried to include any offense under federal law or the laws of another state. We didn't want to limit it to just being convicted of a crime here in Utah. And so that's also reflected in the state rules, but I think it's just important to put that in our policy. Offenses against a person. Again, there are sort of two subchapters here. These are sort of the violent, assault-type things. Chapter five B also is sort of more geared towards protecting minors. There's a little bit of sexual overlap under Chapter five B here. So that's why sex offense is also defined, and that includes any of the sex-related offense against a person. So there may be offenses against a person above, but because they're sex-related, they fall under a sex offense. And then there's also these other violations. These are your lewdness crimes. They can be a felony, or they can be a class A misdemeanor, adults or minors. And then sort of a catch-all to sort of, well, what is defined as a sex offense? We've also included any offense which would require registration as a sex offender under Utah Code. And that would be updated periodically from time to time. So there are certain offenses that you have to register as a sex offender. We're not saying that just because you have to register as a sex offender, you're necessarily precluded from being an employee, but we're talking about, what are we talking about with sex offender? And we specifically are saying includes, because there may be other things that aren't specifically delineated that it doesn't just mean something. So any questions there? And this is a typo. I've already corrected it. This should be seventy-seven forty-one, so.
I noticed that, yes.
Yes, sorry, so. Yeah, and I've talked with Brent, and we have some suggestions already, but, you know, we can only get you so much. Some of these changes, the blue changes were the changes that administration previously brought forward. Sometimes when I've changed those, it's just because we've put it somewhere else. We've added in a provision that explicitly says, hey, during this process, the district can ask or require for additional information, just so you can get more explanation in making the determination. Section five here is, these are, and I'm not necessarily suggesting, and Brent's not either. He has some very good suggestions, and we'll let him weigh in. The policy decisions are, what do you want to say is a never be hired here? This is red, and this is probably a little bit over-inclusive for now, but we sort of put them here until you tell us to move them anywhere elsewhere. And again, I will say that for educators, any felony, sexual offense, or offense against the person is likely to be, you're going to lose your license and have it revoked and not have it. So there may be alcohol-related offenses, there may be drug-related offenses. You may want to say, well, you know, is it just because you have a felony enough? Do you want to have a period of time? Do you want to put some other conditions that you consider? Part of it, I think, too, is maybe we're overthinking it, because this doesn't happen too often. But we just want to have some clarity as we're doing it. Violent felonies, I think, these are your more, there's a definition here. I think these, again, it may be that you want to add a time, you may want to have something else. These are your aggravated assaults. These are, again, pretty significant felonies. Then any sexual offense, this was language that was, I think, a starting point in the previous twenty years. Again, you can change that, you can shorten it, you can make other exceptions. Any class A misdemeanor, and again, maybe you don't want to include an alcohol-related offense here as a forever bar or a drug-related offense.
Can you give me an example of, like, an alcohol-related misdemeanor versus felony? Like, what's a DUI?
DUI is most likely a misdemeanor.
But hitting someone.
But if it's, right, but it can be, if you kill somebody, become reckless, it may go up to a felony. If you have repeated convictions, it can go up to a felony. And again, it can vary.
That helps, though, thank you.
Other offenses against the person. You know, again, these are sort of defined up above. And then sort of a catch-all, which I think is good, is any offense directly related to the essential functions of a prospective employee's position. Now, it could be that you move some of the alcohol-related into this category. Typically, the alcohol-related offenses are more geared towards driving. Again, but if we're including in alcohol-related, you know, supplying alcohol to underage minors, that can impact. It's just very difficult to get all the nuances here. Then this six is supposed to be sort of the yellow. And what this is intended to be is the following types of convictions are pleas. And we took out just being charged. Obviously, if somebody is charged below, they'll have a duty to report to us, and we can take certain action. If somebody's applying, and they're already charged with a crime, we can consider that. But if somebody is actually arrested for something and charged, but they're acquitted, deemed not guilty, obviously, we don't want to have that bar them. So, but we do have pleas and abeyance, or guilty pleas or other pleas. We consider those to be the same as a conviction, and that's pretty consistent with the state rules as well. But, so what we've done here is, any of the following conviction or pleas, which are not otherwise an automatic bar above, they can be considered for employment at the recommendation of the superintendent and with the approval of the board. You could change that to be with notice to the board, et cetera. The thought here is just that there's a thoughtful process. If there's going to be an exception, you may not want to hear them, you may want to hear them. And I do think that any other felony, you know, since felonies are so significant, it doesn't necessarily mean an outright bar, but they could explain it, you could get into the circumstances. And again, that's seven and eight below, sort of say that there's a review process, and they can kind of appeal. And then under this B, two or more offenses, this may be better, two or more misdemeanor class As, as Brent indicated, they get on these reports pretty much everything. So it can be traffic convictions, it can be shoplifting, you know, it could be, it's shoplifting from when maybe you were quite a bit younger or years before.
Too many cats. We've had that.
Too many cats. Too many cats is probably not a class A misdemeanor, no.
But there could be multiple too many cat convictions, which would then have to come to the board based on number two, which is my concern. There are things that you probably don't need to be aware of based on that, but that's what we're talking about, is the too many cats.
Right. Is it in the prior ten years? Is it a shorter period of time, three or more? The idea here is if there's a, and it's hard to capture, too, because you could have something that's pretty significant, not significant. You could have a pattern where somebody is having, you know, every year they get arrested for shoplifting, right? But it's a class, they probably wouldn't hire them anyway, because they could consider that. It's not that they can't consider something. So we don't necessarily have to make it an absolute bar. But that's kind of what we are proposing along these lines. Below, the rest is just sort of, since we've now defined offense against the person, we took out this one statutory reference, but I think for clarity, I think it's good to say, you know, these are these sorts of things. And then the same thing for the non-licensed employees. So Brent, you have our doctor Lemaster?
Sure, I'd love to talk a little bit about it, and thank you for the time. As you all know, right now, any felony is blocked until we've had the situation where we've brought this policy up. And so it's very easy for us to say, well, there's a felony, you're not eligible. Now, with these clarifications, I appreciate Paul's making some clarifications on definitions. Just to clarify with everyone, these are ESPs, miscellaneous employees only. Everything for licensed educators goes to the UPAC. And so we don't make any determination on any licensed employee. It's just ESPs and miscellaneous. And there's an extensive process with any situation that we're going through. When we receive a conviction or a report, we look at that first to determine, are they even eligible? Do we kick them out because of felony? Or if it's a child sexual offense, it's not even an option. We don't go down that road. But in those yellow instances, we then have a sanctions committee, where somebody from HR, the principal, and the administrator of schools actually sits down and reviews every single one of these, if it's in that yellow category. And there's a lot of things we look at. As Paul mentioned, how long ago was it? Are there multiple ones? Did it involve children? A lot of things, yeah, duties for the job. All of those things are reviewed with the AOS and the principal to decide, is this something we as a district could handle if we employed this person, and then something happened afterwards? So that's part of the discussion with the AOS. So it's not an HR decision just deciding. We talk to the AOSs and the principals for that. There are some things that I had a chance to talk to Paul with today. Under five, when we originally proposed this, it did not have alcohol offense, and that was what prompted this discussion. And that's because if somebody has a DUI felony but thirty years ago, and their job is not driving, or maybe it is driving, but it was so long ago, and there are no additional instances, should it be an automatic red? I have concerns with that, because we have situations that could potentially be an employee if we put, but if we put alcohol in that section as a red, it's not even an option, which is similar to just a felony right now. The other concern I talked to Paul about was under six B, for example, and I like the idea of if there is a felony, to bring it to you, whether it's a notification or an approval, I get it. Again, we don't normally hire anybody with a felony anyway, so I would love somebody to see that if we are recommending employment. The concern I have on six B is, if there are two offenses, does that have to come to you? In my view, it should be probably a misdemeanor A level, if there are two misdemeanor A levels. But if I have somebody charged with retail theft four times, and it was ten years ago, this would require me to bring it to the board for approval. So there are things where I think we could clarify that to limit what you have to see versus what we review as part of our process. And so those are just the comments I wanted to make after I talked to Paul, but I appreciate the additional information provided.
Clarify again what your concern was with?
The one I put up. The one I put up on the screen is sort of an attempt to address that. This would be an altered version from the one you had. What I would, and again, this is not final. But I think clearly, a sexual offense, a felony sex offense or felony offense against the person, that's, I think, where we go, okay.
Or felony drug.
Felony.
Yeah.
Violent felony is probably included in those, so maybe that's redundant, if we're just going with any. But violent felony also includes some stuff that's not necessarily in felony against a person. This also sort of includes some of the gang-related stuff that's maybe not. I'm just saying, I think this is a good catch-all, because of violent felony. Then, this is going to both Brent and Mr. Dunford. You know, maybe there's a felony alcohol-related offense or felony drug-related offense, and I only put in fifteen years. I'm not saying this is the right time period, and maybe you limit it to a time period. It could be longer, shorter, ten years. You could add other conditions here. This gives a little bit of that, you know, maybe they can explain it away. Again, these are felonies, so they're pretty significant, but I think Brent's point is well-taken. If it's so far removed and they haven't had other offenses, you know, do we let somebody rehabilitate themselves? We often have needs that maybe they're the only person that can meet it. It doesn't mean we don't supervise or safeguard them. And then, kind of, again, this would be, this is just sort of left. It could be any felony or class A misdemeanor, and then you go through the same analysis for that. I just left this in. And then Brent's other change was two or more class A misdemeanor offenses in the previous ten years or whatever, so.
And rarely do we ever allow somebody to be hired with this kind of stuff anyway. We're just clarifying policy, which is, I think, the key here. I would almost lead to leaving the felony in the red category rather than an option, but again, that's up for discussion. Sorry.
Just to clarify that point, so if you have a couple of applicants, and one has this record and one doesn't, and they're both equally qualified, I mean, you can still, when you're making that decision, say, mm, I think I'm going to go with this one without the record. Or the misdemeanor on the record or something. Is that part of the decision-making process?
Not, it's not supposed to be. We're making a decision based on who's the best fit for the position. And that's why the director or the principal gets involved in all interviewing decisions. It's when we hire somebody, and then we may or may not know the results of the fingerprint until it comes back. And that's when we find the information and then go through our process.
Got it. Thank you.
I have a question about the yellow category. When does it become too arbitrary in making those decisions? I worry about, you know, that being put on you.
Well, again, it's not just us, it's the AOS.
Ultimately, I mean, initially, it's you, and I think we can get, I think we can get pretty arbitrary about some of the decisions we make, and so I'm just wondering what's going to, you know, make that not possible.
It's worked really well up till now. We have a very solid process that we are allowed and able to follow that doesn't allow some things in that may not have been previously. And like Paul mentioned, there is no way you can list every possible crime.
No, no.
There's no way we could even contemplate every possible crime until we see it on paper, and then we do our analysis of how long ago did it involve kids, all those kinds of things. I don't know if that answers your question, but.
So I think, and again, we don't have to make these decisions tonight and probably shouldn't, but I think what we're looking for are the policy decisions. You know, what do you want with input from Brent and other administrators, myself? Is there something you want? Is there a bright line? Do you want to just leave it open? Do you want to have a yellow? I will say, from the standpoint of getting your licensure as a licensed educator, the periods of time are, there's a list of categories where your license is revoked, and then you can never have it reinstated. Those are typically the sexual, particularly the ones involving children. But other than that, it's pretty much, you can get a clean slate, a lot less time than what's proposed in our policy.
If you remember the original documents I provided, I gave you a summary of different organizations and what they look at as far as timelines, and UPAC was one of those. I would say that UPAC is probably more, we are more stringent than I think UPAC is currently, so.
So let's say I have, you know, a few kids in school, in elementary, or any of the other levels of school, and give me an idea, some of the ESP positions that maybe interact the most with children. So you've got a whole, a broad array of ESPs, and some of them may not even interact with kids at all, you know, and some a lot. Which are the positions that would maybe be alone with a child at one point, or interact on a regular basis with children?
So any of our classroom assistants, whether part-time or full-time, any special ed classroom assistants, either part-time or full-time, those are the ones that they're probably closest to. We then also have nutrition, who do work somewhat with the kids, and custodial, who do work, whether it's a sweeper or other, but they're not generally alone, but generally those classroom assistants that are are bus drivers as well. That's a great point.
You know, as a parent, I would prefer to err on the side of caution. I would, I would prefer to, to err on the side of caution. You know, I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want my child to be in a classroom with a classroom assistant who had a felony on his or her record. And it's not that I don't trust the person, it's that I can't trust the person. I don't know the person. Yeah, so maybe, maybe we'd have to break it out into, into certain positions where there's a yellow. You know, I would, I would want to be a hard red on any position, like maybe the ones you just mentioned.
It is difficult, I think, for us to, to try to create a scale of who has the most. It's easier to say, we are going to do this for all employees so that we don't have to worry about some kind of line, but.
So, yeah, I mean, if, if that's the case, if it's, if it complicates the hiring process too much, I would probably not want much of a yellow area at all then, yeah.
So can I ask, in our red category under number five, we, first of all, I mean, why do we specify, like on letter C, any sex offense occurring in the previous 20 years? When above, we've already said. I, I guess because it's not necessarily a felony?
Correct.
That's why it's listed twice?
The original proposal was if there were any felonies in those three categories, there's not an option.
So if it's a felony, out. If it's a misdemeanor within this period of time, out.
Okay.
That's what C is.
That makes more sense to me now. Thanks.
So you can say 20 years is too much, 20 years is not enough. So, yeah, B, B is intended to be any other non-felony type offense that has occurred within 20 years. That's a red for me.
Will, will you say that again? Any felony type offense that has?
Any non-felony sexual offense that has occurred within 20 years. So a Class A misdemeanor, a Class B misdemeanor, something that didn't rise to the felony offense. Anything that rises to the felony is A. If it's less than a felony, sex-related, it's C.
Within the last 20 years?
Within, yeah.
Even if you're-
A mechanic working at transportation.
Yeah, 'cause to, to distinguish is way too messy.
And, and we still have the sanctions group where we sit and evaluate these. So it's very possible that somebody could fit into the yellow and the principal and the AOS just can't stomach that risk. And I think that's key here, is that we still evaluate these individually to make sure we're making the best decision.
So I am willing to move, make some yellow areas here. I, I, I don't think all of these need to be absolute red. So with the Class A misdemeanor, alcohol-related offense, or drug-related offense. Oh, actually, I see that occurring in the previous 15 years. Okay. And is there any thought on age at the time of offense?
Yes, that's part of the calculation. We have many people who make a mistake at 18 years old that they never would make at 40 years old, so we take into account the age as well.
Okay, thank you.
But that's not in the policy, right now. If you want to add it, we can add it, but right now it is a consideration by the committee, but it's not in the policy. And our, our goal was to clean up the policy, to match, to, to harmonize what the committee's doing, and people can go and read our policy.
The school district, you know, we're, I, I like the idea of second chances. And, and, and we talked about, you know, second chances for students. I, I don't believe that the school district is in the business of giving second chances to felons. There, there's, there's other opportunities for them to get work. It's not the school district's responsibility to, to help someone rehabilitate, to help adult criminal, or someone who's committed a felony, or maybe a Class A misdemeanor a few times. We're under no obligation to, to try to rehabilitate them, you know. Our, our focus is the kids, and I believe in second chances for kids. But second chances for felons? There, there, there are other avenues for them. You know, they're, they can find jobs somewhere else. They don't have to come to the school district.
I, I think something we need to consider too is that somebody who committed a felony 15 years ago, or a misdemeanor, I guess I should say 15 years ago, it's not like the school district is rehabilitating them. In many cases, they could be helping the school district fill a position that has previously been unfilled. And so I don't think it is about rehabilitating people, but I think it is about employing people in a capacity that they are well-adapted or well-able to fill. And so, anyway, I, I, anyway, I just wanted to say that.
Sounds like this is gonna come back to another study session. Does everyone need more time to ponder these proposed changes?
Brian's proposed one. Six A is deleted.
And then Mr. Van Coman kind of put up some things based on what Mr. Burge had said, right?
Yeah, and I think, I think Mr. Barnett's would be to just move six A, go back to the any felony and you're out. So, I mean, I, there, there are some proposals we can, I'm not ruling out anything. I mean, one is just any felony. But I, but that's correct. I mean, Mr. Barnett is saying, no, I don't want any felony to, to be a yellow. It's more up in red. But I, the one that I've, I've got on my screen right now was an attempt to sort of address these issues, but this is just the first address that, you know, after we talked.
And as a parent and an aunt, I've had people in my family make poor choices early in their life and be convicted of a felony and move forward, and they are not felons. They are people who made a mistake and been convicted and paid the price and moved on to live a productive life. And so with any felony, I, I disagree with removing that.
I didn't, I didn't want to suggest that someone who has created, who has committed a felony is always a bad person for the rest of their life. You know, I don't, I don't want my remark to be thought of that way, 'cause I know there are people who legitimately changed and they're, they're, they're different people. But there are also people who still have whatever tendencies they had to commit that felony. They still carry those with them. So you have some people who have changed completely and they're a totally different person. They would never do that thing again. And you have some people who haven't made the change. How am I as a parent supposed to know whether this new person we hired is this guy or this guy? Or this lady or this lady? I, I can't know that. And so as a parent, I would say, I don't want my child in that classroom because I don't know what type of person that is.
But they do, and you're taking away that option.
I don't, I don't know if they do.
Yeah.
Why would they know?
Because they go through that whole screening process.
But how, how can you really know whether that person has changed?
But, but the same question could be asked of anybody, whether or not they have been convicted of a felony or a misdemeanor. There's absolutely no way to know exactly what every person is going to do in every situation. But I feel like with background checks and with looking at the history and with an interview, you can make your best judgment. And, and that's, that's what people have to do all the time. That is what employers and people have to do. Because whether or not somebody has had a felony conviction 10 years ago, five years ago, or never had one, we don't know what that person is going to do.
Absolutely agree, yeah.
But you're proposing an all-red policy, right, Brian?
For felonies, yeah.
One potential option for somebody, if we were to do a yellow felony, is we could require them to go through the expungement process with the Bureau of Criminal Identification. When I first got into this job with June, 19 years ago, we required everyone to go through, to be expunged regardless of the level of charge. The amount of time and money it takes to get rid of too many cats charged, not feasible. And I'm sorry I keep going back to that, but we've had that multiple times.
Really?
But, but if we were to do this, one thing we could say is, if we're gonna allow you, you have to go through the expungement process and you have a timeframe. It does cost money, it costs a lot of money for the person, but that is a potential option as well. It's not an easy process and it's expensive.
I don't, actually, I don't remember what the requirements are to run for the board. Can a felon run for the school board?
Yeah.
And I prefer that we say somebody who has been convicted of a felony, because felon is labeling a person as their act. If, if, anyway, I feel like there's a distinction there.
But it is possible for someone who's convicted of a felony to run for school board?
When I, well, I don't know. When I was running for the first time, Cody Judy, who served some time for attacking Latter-day Saint Prophet, was running for Senate and he, was that some of the campaign places I was? He didn't win.
Interesting. Yeah, I was just curious.
I, I would assume that. I, I think the key here is that time. I think someone who makes a mistake at age 19 or 20, and now been through 20 years, a 40-year-old is much different than a 20-year-old. I, I think that is a critical. We're not, we're not hiring a felon who was convicted yesterday. We, we'd hope that with a, a period of, of living a good life, that we're not taking a risk on them because they are a different person at age 40 or 50 than they are at age 20.
So one option would be to put a time limit on it, or a timeframe on it too?
I would be in favor of a timeframe if we're gonna allow it.
Timeframe or expungement?
Yeah.
I like having the words. I think it's important to note that a yellow light means proceed with caution, not-
Don't.
Let them in.
It's not green.
We're, we're seeing it has to have board approval and a superintendent recommendation.
And, and so I feel like putting a time limit on there, we would be able to look at the, the situation and see the time and see exactly what happened in the age of the person. So I think we don't necessarily need to put a time on, yeah, and see-
I really think that matters.
Yeah.
I think it does to principals, because if you're-
I probably wouldn't have them diaper a 15-year-old teenager in, in a special ed classroom, but I might consider it.
Well, it could have been a white-collar crime.
It could have, absolutely. But that's why I'm, I feel like we're being very cautious in the yellow category still.
I feel like our red category is pretty robust.
Yes.
As it should be.
As it should be.
I really like the direction. I'm okay bringing it back, but I like the changes that we made.
Do, so do board members want more time to consider this and bring it back? Or do you want to work through some changes? I mean, we'll still bring it back to, I think, another study session before it gets voted on. I'm assuming nobody's ready to vote on it. Is that correct? Okay. So do you want to work on changes right now to bring back? Or do you want to think about it and come back to a future study session? No preference.
I feel like we've worked on changes.
Yeah. So I would say let's bring it back to the next study session with with some changes that have been recommended by our human resources department.
That have already been incorporated.
Yes, but not on board docs. Like, I don't have it yet, so, yeah. And then we will have future, and then have a future discussion about Brian's suggestions of removing six A altogether, or adding a timeframe or an expungement phrase to that. Does that sound okay?
We're in the hiring process right now. Is that gonna tie your hands?
We are always in the process for ESPs, but remember, license don't come through us, it's to the state, so that doesn't-
It's not gonna tie your hands at all?
I'm interested how often you have to refer to this policy. Is it frequently referred to, or? Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
So will you bring us on, on six, just some alternate language? We either just leave it as is and then maybe bring us an alternate language that includes some sort of timeframe expungement thing? And then the third option is-
For some proposals.
Take it out altogether. Okay. Okay. Thank you for your work on this. All right, we're gonna get started on our next agenda item. I don't know if we'll be able to finish it before, before our general meeting, but we'd like to invite Ms. Love Day and this is your first, Latisha's the only name that keeps coming to my mind. Vigil. Ms. Vigil to the table. Thank you. Our agenda item is a presentation on the English Language Learner software, and this will be a software that's adopted district-wide. So we, as a board, need to be able to make the vote on that and provide opportunity for public input on that. So this is just our initial presentation on that software.
Yes, thank you for having us. We have been using this curriculum. We're gonna make sure, we're gonna have a few slides to share here in a second, make sure we're sharing it the right way. And so Reading Horizons curriculum, also known as Elevate, has been in the district now for five years. And it's a curriculum that has been used to support students who are learning English and learning how to read. As we all know, we take for granted sometimes the phonetics and phonemic awareness that come into play when it is learning how to read. However, it's one of those that, when you're in the secondary area, it's a very careful tread because we don't want them to feel, you know, young or elementary in the way that they're learning the phonetic awareness and the digraphs and the dongs and all the things that come along with reading and literacy. So the Reading Horizons curriculum has provided us services with our secondary students in how they learn that. And I've brought Latisha here, she's been one of our trained teacher specialists and our secondary teacher specialists, to explain a little bit about the curriculum, what it is, and the process, and how it works.
Thank you, Michelle, and thanks for letting us be here to present this today. So like Michelle mentioned, the, the reading is typically taught in elementary, so the kids are getting the phonics instruction there and how to break down words and decode. And so for many of our secondary students that are newcomers, whether it be that they don't know English and can't read in English, or they're not familiar with the Roman alphabet whatsoever, or they've had limited or interrupted education, they're, they don't have those skills taught in secondary, so they're not able to get that initial decoding and, and reading skills. So it, it's very difficult for them to learn how to read, and that's a crucial piece, as we know, to, to succeed in schools, being able to have, be a strong reader. And so this program is crucial for our multilingual learners because we don't have, there are not a lot of programs out there that teach these skills in a secondary setting. And so Reading Horizons elevates, there's, there's an elementary program, but the secondary program is called Elevate. So it's explicit sequential and multisensory phonics instructional framework. There's not, it's not just software. We do want the software approved, but there is also teacher-led instruction that goes with that. So the software supplements the teacher-led instruction and it also provides data for the teachers to guide their instruction and to see which students are struggling on which skills and to how to customize that for each student's needs. So we've had, we've, we adopted it for our multilingual learners about five years ago, and you can see the list of schools that are currently using the program. Because schools have the freedom to choose what the curriculum that they want to use, we, we haven't mandated that, and so these are the ones that have found success and are continuously using it each year. And so they are using the software quite a bit with their multilingual learners and their ELD classes.
And, and due to time, we have the board materials that are linked in your folders and things like that, and you can look through some of the program, programming and how it's taught sequentially so that they can have those items. And then there's also the website and additional materials that you can look at later on for the information.
I have physical materials if anybody wanted to look at them as well, as far as the teacher materials. So these links are here, and then we've also included a teacher testimonial for one of the middle school teachers at Copper Mountain Middle that has been using this for a while, and she highly recommends it.
The success of this program, while it doesn't fall under the threshold of us bringing it to you for purchasing sake, however, it falls under our new policy, under the curriculum policy. And so since we're using this district-wide, we wanted you to be aware of that, and then there will be a digital review for the community to go through all of the items that we've placed in here so that they can have the information and receive the curriculum information that'll be there later on. We haven't selected those dates just yet. Okay, so we, we're using this now, but does our contract end and we're gonna re-up it, is that why? That's exactly, it, our contract ends and we have to renew it for this school year. Some schools, because our contract ended, they had used the funding in their ears, at-risk funding, and purchased it in November or March, and so they're kind of overlapping with us renewing ours. And so Reading Horizons will be providing some free training. Latisha is one of the trainer, or trainers that will also be out training as well, so they're adjusting it so that all of our contracting dates start August first.
And will it still be an option for schools to use, or are we making this a district-wide?
It'll still be an option for schools to use. There's other programs out there, we haven't compared the success of it just yet, but Reading Horizons is one that we have found with good success and good esteem for students and the teachers that are involved.
And are we using this exclusively with students who are learning a language?
No, some, some programs, some use it with their special ed students and some have it in just a supplementary reading class for their struggling readers.
We're also using it at our family engagement centers.
Okay, so this approval would cover all use across the district, not just ML?
Yes, correct.
Yes.
It's not just MLs, ML learners?
Okay.
Both are acceptable.
Okay.
What kind of, it, it sounds like it's done well in the district and people enjoy it. Have there, have there been any negative, negative feedback, negative comments, areas where it falls short? Teacher?
No, I think some teachers haven't given it a chance because maybe some schools don't have a supplemental reading class at this level at their middle school or high school, they don't have enough students to put into a class, and so it can be challenging if your class has got a mixed level of beginning readers and advanced readers to do this kind of a program because it would be, it's more intended for either small groups or for all students that are struggling readers. So that would be one disadvantage is if they don't have a class for it. But otherwise, I think just teachers that don't know about it, there's a lot of them that don't know about it, so they don't know how effective it is as much as we've put the word out.
And if, if we renew and we have five more schools that want to use it, does that change our renewal rate?
No, when we were working out how many licenses we have, we looked at what we currently are using and then kind of, you know, purchased over a little bit in hopes that a school or two would come over to us based on that. And again, it's just those students that are just, you know, beginning, learning, are extreme newcomers. So there, there's a smaller number of window than those students that are, you know, level three in their WEATA scores. So we accommodated for the what-ifs. And the funding for this comes through, we had our software funding that rolls over and that will be bundled into our Title III funding, so that's where the funding comes from to purchase the licenses for this. And they give us a discounted price at the district level. So we're helping schools save money. Then our curriculum adoption and review committee has reviewed this and recommends it, right? Yes, teaching and learning has looked through it, and because it's a sole source, we had to go through those processes and we looked at other districts that were using this. And because they are the only company that provides the service that they have, we were able to go through with purchasing on a sole source piece. And then remind me, we have to take public comment at two different meetings? Yes, that is correct. And there was discussion of having a digital review, we can do that, or we could even have it in person, but I think that would be left up to how the curriculum was told to have. So we're flexible either way.
Absent direction from the board, we'll just probably do a digital review with the chance to contact staff with questions, since it's a continuation of what we've been using as opposed to something new and because it's online, so they can fully review that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. That seems appropriate since it is an online program to do a digital review.
And people can access that? That's not a licensing issue?
We'll be able to let them sample it.
Yes, there are samples that the company can offer.
I am happy to move forward with that.
Thank you.
Okay, so we, we have access to it now on board docs, so we can all be looking through it ourselves. And then a notification will go out to parents.
Through this slide that said, that linked board materials, is that where I should look?
Well, and then I think everything is in there, this, four slides are in there with the board materials as well, and then additional materials should be in your space, already dropped in. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, any other questions? Okay, good. Thank you so much. Okay, thank you, appreciate it. All right, we will take a break now and start our general meeting out in the big room at 6:30.
Not that I'm excited or anything.
Congratulations.
Okay, well, welcome, everyone. It is great to see a full house here tonight. It's the last week of school. There's a lot going on. That's right. We're excited. And we are, we are happy to have all of you here tonight. Thank you for joining us. This is the Jordan School District Board of Education meeting. Today is Tuesday, May 28th, 2024. We are at the J A T C South Building. And we have, starting down here on this end, our Board Attorney, Mr. Van Coman. Then Board Members Bryce Dunford, Lisa Dean, Marilyn Richards, Nikki George. I'm Tracy Miller, Dell Robinson, Brian Barnett, our Superintendent Anthony Godfrey, and our Business Administrator, John Larson. We are really excited today to have a Scout Troop here with us and also Copper Mountain Middle School in the house. So we are going to start with our Pledge of Allegiance by Scout Troop 123, under the direction of Scout Master Randall Wardle. And then after that, we will have our Reverence by Copper Mountain Middle School Student Body Officers, Addison Stutz from ninth grade and Natalie Wardle from eighth grade. And then following that, we will have a celebrating schools presentation by our Copper Mountain Middle School Student Body Officers. Seventh grade officers are Brooklyn Berry, McKay Bowen, Ellie Danielson, and Ivy Stutz. Our eighth grade officers are Annie Peterson, Hallie Critchlow, Liam Luzvardy, and Natalie Wardle. And our ninth grade officers are Addison Stutz, Bryson Hat, Eli Wardle, Wardle, and Logan Duron. So we will turn the time to Scout Troop 123.
Color Guard, attention. Audience, please rise. Please place your right hand over your heart. Color Guard, forward march. Color Guard, halt. Color Guard, cross the colors.
By allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two. Color Guard.
Color Guard, post the United, the flag of the United States of America. Color Guard, post the flag of the Great Salt Lake of Utah and the historic flag, state flag. Color Guard, honor your colors. Two. Color Guard, return to your ranks. Color Guard dismissed. Audience may be seated.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I'm Addison Stutz, ninth grade SPO.
I'm Natalie Wardle, in the eighth grade SPO.
We would like to share with you a quote from the book Wonder. When given the choice between being right and being kind, choose kind. We chose this quote because we felt it shows Copper Mountain Middle School's efforts to be kind.
Our school has been prioritizing kindness over the years and has put together a group called Kindness Squad that helps spread kindness at the school. We feel that it is very important to spread kindness in middle school. Middle school can be hard for a lot of people, but spreading kindness can help students feel happier. One act of kindness can change someone's day.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, we are the Student Body Officers from Copper Mountain Middle School, and we would like to introduce ourselves. My name is Annie, and I'm one of the eighth grade SPOs.
I'm Brooklyn Berry, and I'm a seventh grade SPO.
I am Ivy Stutz, and I am a seventh grade SPO.
I'm Hallie Critchlow, I'm an eighth grade SPO.
I'm Bryson Hut, I am a ninth grade SPO.
I'm Liam Luzvardy, and I'm an eighth grade SPO.
I'm McKay Bowen, and I'm a seventh grade SPO.
I'm Logan Jerome, I'm a ninth grade SPO.
I'm Eli Wardle, I'm a ninth grade SPO.
I'm Natalie Wardle, and I'm an eighth grade SPO.
I'm Addison Stutz, I'm a ninth grade SPO.
This year marks the 10-year anniversary of Copper Mountain Middle School's opening in 2013. Throughout this time, thirteen thousand six hundred and four students have attended our school. We have had three principals who have guided our school throughout these 10 years. Mrs. Peacock is our current principal, and she's always happy and positive whenever we see her. Our school demonstrates kindness and safety.
This year, we had the opportunity to raise money for the Utah Food Bank to help people who are struggling in need. We got many students involved in the food drive to help meet our goal. It was a really fun experience collecting food for the food bank. We got a reward anytime we met a certain amount of food, and we did an extra five minutes of lunch.
The other rewards from this food drive included a treat for the whole school, ice bucket challenge for SPOs and teachers, shaved half our vice principal's mustache off, duct taped teachers to the wall, and finally, a squad activity. We had a basketball game at the end with Mountain Creek Middle School. Many people showed up. We collected a lot of food from the game and totally collected 1,945 food donations. This year, our school play was, we did Matilda Junior. The play involved many students that are in our school of acting and stage crew. You could see the hard work that the students put into it, and it was entertaining and enjoyable for everyone to watch.
Our dance performance honored the 10-year anniversary of Copper Mountain with dances showing 10 different emotions. It was fun for students to watch their friends and classmates perform. The dancers worked very hard to put on this performance.
Our students can choose to take part in our band, orchestra, and choir programs. That gives, that gives them the opportunity to learn new skills. The teachers work really hard to help every student improve. They're always patient and understanding when students make mistakes. The teachers and students have worked hard to prepare for performances and concerts that showcase the talents and skills that they have gained throughout the school year.
There are many different skills that students learn in the R and CTE classes at Copper Mountain. In ceramics, students create useful everyday objects like mugs. In college and career awareness, students make tic-tac toe boards and keychains. Students have also learned fun hands-on skills such as how to wield plastic swords together, how to use a jope press, how to use a sewing machine, and how to operate an oven. These R and CTE classes prepare students for future careers.
At Copper Mountain Middle School, we have amazing teachers and staff. They are great at working with students, and they teach us everything we need to know. We have counselors who support our student body and are always there for those who need someone to talk to. Whenever students request a meeting with their counselor, they're called in as soon as possible, usually within the hour. Our counselors are great at helping students with any concerns or problems they have. They also do everything they can to make new students feel welcome at our school. They've set up a student ambassador program to give new students the extra support and help they need to get started.
The SPOs and Kindness Squad also work as student ambassadors. This is a great way for new students to meet and make new friends. Our school, our school has many students who come from other countries. We currently have 161 multilingual learners, 130 of two which speak Spanish. We have students from Ukraine, Venezuela, Mexico, Colombia, South Africa, Guatemala, Vietnam, Brazil, and 17 other country, countries. This student ambassador program helps them acclimate to our school.
Last week, we had our annual running of the Colts. This is a great way for our school to come together with students, teachers, counselors, custodians, and administrators participating. Coaches Thompson and Keating set up a one-mile track around the school grounds, and we run the race during wind time, which is our school's intervention and extension time. Students and teachers who don't run the race still participate by going outside to cheer on time, or cheer on their peers. It's a fun way for our school to come together regardless of our differences. We are very proud to attend Copper Mountain Middle School. To honor the 10-year anniversary of Copper Mountain, we have anniversary pins and shirts that we'd like to present to you. Please let us know when we are able to approach the desk and present the pins and the shirts to you. Thank you for your ti- time and attention.
Thank you, Copper Mountain Middle School. So many great things going on there. It's a pleasure to hear all about that. And can I get everyone that's involved with Copper Mountain, so students, parents, and any of the staff to please stand up? Thank you. We would love to have all of the students come up and start down here on this end. We would love to shake your hands. We have something for you also. And then we'd also like the Scout Troop to come up also. So can I get all the students and scouts to come forward?
Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Nice to meet you. Good job. Coming today. Nice to meet you. Good job.
Okay, oh, are there, these are the pins for all of us? Got it. And I'll pass them out. Okay. Perfect. Oh, you're making it easy on us. Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. That's awesome. Thanks, you guys. You did a good job. One of the best flag ceremonies we've seen. Good job. You guys are well, well ju- job. Good job. Excellent ceremony. Thank you. They did a great job.
Thank you so much for being here tonight. I am, it's been, it's been a while since we've had a Scout Troop here, and it's been a while since I've been a Scout leader, and I just miss my brown uniform. Wear it next week. So thank you all so much for being here. We just really appreciate all of our, our students and our schools and all their hard work and involvement, and this is such a busy week. So appreciate you taking time out of your schedules to be here with us. And I was at the Running of the Colts event this week, and it really was just an amazing. The students were either running, or they were cheering on people that were running, but everyone was involved. And such, such great school spirit and, and I don't know if, some of you may have seen the social media posts that our district did, but one boy that was pushing another boy in a wheelchair that got stuck in the grass, and the students rallied and, and helped that student finish and cross the line. And I'm just really enjoyed just seeing the community at Copper Mountain Middle School. So thank you all for being here. We're going to move on to our next agenda item, and students, you're welcome to stay to the meeting as long as you want, but we also would like you to know that we're not offended if you get up and leave because we know you've got a lot of stuff going on this week. And so next is our Resolutions of Appreciation. Ms. Richards.
We're asked dedicated service to Jordan-
Whereas dedicated service to Jordan School District was faithfully and effectively performed, whereas they consistently and conscientiously executed their responsibilities with integrity, honesty, and loyalty, be it therefore resolved that the Jordan School District Board of Education and District Administration declare appreciation for the outstanding service that was performed in the cause of public education and hereby express our sorrow at the death of these valued friends. Tamara Gail Fowler Adams, teacher. Rick Zane Dumont, teacher and administrator. Brock Hampton, teacher. Marcia Chalk Wade, teacher.
Thank you. All right, our next agenda item is recognitions and we are so excited tonight to have the Jordan Education Foundation Outstanding Educator, Outstanding Education Support Professional Awards tonight. So we would like to welcome the Director of the Jordan Education Foundation, Mike Haynes, up to the podium and then we'll let him introduce everyone else and tell us how we're going to proceed.
Thank you, President Miller, Board of Education. Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. This is exciting. This is a great night for us. We love the Jordan School District. We are excited to be a part of it and happy to be here tonight and to see so many people here to support friends and family who will be recipients of awards tonight. But it all is possible because of you and the support that the board has for the foundation and what we're able to do and accomplish with your support. Thank you so much for that. So we are very fortunate as a school district and a foundation to have such great community volunteers on our board. We have a board of about 30 members of our community. Many of them are here tonight. If we can get the board members from the foundation to stand and come right over here between the flag and the, the table here. And thank you and we, we love and recognize our education support professionals across the district. And for those who don't know, if you're not a licensed teacher in the district and you have a capacity outside of teaching, then you are a ESP or an education support professional. And we're here to recognize those tonight. But to do so tonight, we've got our board president, our volunteer board president, Clark Bell, who's the CEO of Nano Yield. And I'm going to turn the time over to Clark, but thank him for all his service for us. Thank you, Clark.
President Miller, Board of Education, Board of Directors for our Jordan School District. Fantastic to be with you all here this evening. My name's Clark Bell. I'm the President of Jordan Education Foundation. It is one of my favorite things that I'm involved in because I grew up in a, in a household of, of schoolteachers and it's one of my purpose in life to continue to give back to them. It's my distinct privilege and honor tonight to recognize these individuals from our, our district that are ESPs as, as Mike Haynes mentioned before. I was educated in the Granite School District, so please don't hold that against me if I mispronouncey any of the names or anything along those lines. So for our recipients, if they could go up to where you see the handsome man in the gray suit, Mike Haynes, if he could go up there and he'll direct you as follows. So let's get right into it. Does that sound good? Okay. Thank you, President Miller. All right, first, we have our first ever Award of Excellence. Again, this is our first ever to, for this to be issued. We're really excited about this. This award is going to Rebecca, Rebecca Janis. Let's give it up for Rebecca. Quite an applause. Congrats, Rebecca. Becca is an amazing therapist and coworker. She exemplifies the importance of education as a mentor, student, teacher, and team lead and does so with grace and respect for all her coworkers. Becca puts everyone at ease, families and coworkers alike. As soon as she walks into a family's home, you can see the connection she has with the child and the parents. They trust her and look to her for ideas and ways to help their child in the home setting. Becca's style allows others to express their true concerns and allows her to consistently get to the heart of the problem, come up with solutions, and bring out the best in others. Becca, come here. Come give me a hug. And just so the board is aware, everyone is receiving a plaque which, Becca, this is ordered to be on your fireplace mantle. Hope that's not a problem. A nice, a nice, what do we call these cups? Do we call them Stanley's? It's like Kleenex. It's, it's just as known as that. Okay, Stanley. And, and inside of this envelope, Rebecca, is a thousand dollars just for you. So congratulations. Okay, fantastic. Next, we're going to do, what's that, sorry? Okay, yes. Yeah, yeah. If you could, yes, if, if, after you've received your award, if you can just line up perpendicular to me, that'd be great. Okay. Next, we're going to get into the awards for all of our ESPs and we'll get right into that. So up next is Gerard Dornbaus. Gerard. Gerard's exceptional work can be seen in every single school and parking lot. He's a very skilled craftsman and a master class teacher. Gerard consistently exhibits optimism and motivates his team to tackle difficult assignments. Gerard and his crew perform their duties after everyone else has gone home, requiring them to set up, do their work, then clean up in time for school to begin the next day. Gerard's accomplishments are seen in our work and learning spaces every day, usually without us even noticing. His exemplary work shows how much he cares about the health and wellness of teachers and students. Let's give it up again for Gerard. Okay, up next is Melissa Eliasen, who's a Nutrition Services Manager from Kari Sue Hamilton. Melissa. Melissa plays a vital role ensuring the health and well-being of the students at Kari Sue. Melissa's ability to prepare numerous daily meals that cater to the varied needs of the students is exceptional. She is flexible, adaptable, and puts extra effort into her work to make sure all student needs are met. This includes being aware of allergies, special diets, and making accommodations such as chopping or pureeing food for students who require it. Melissa's flexibility, vigilance, and knowledge ensures all students have access to nutritious, enjoyable meals, which is crucial for their health and educational experience. She has made the cafeteria a welcoming, fun, and inclusive place for all students and staff. Let's give it up for Melissa. Next up is Kira Frischnecht of Riverton Elementary. Riverton, Riverton Elementary's wellness room is very effective because of Kira's qualities, which include being caring, kind, empathetic, compassionate, and patient. When students feel anxious, angry, sad, upset, frustrated, or don't know how to express their feelings, they feel comfortable not only talking to Kira, but also listening to her advice and how to cope with their emotions. Students will come into the room emotionally escalated and Kira is able to calm down and soothe them quickly. Students know she cares about them and teachers, staff, and parents just adore her. Let's give it up for Kira. Next up, we have Mackenzie Fuller from Harriman Elementary School. Mackenzie has a deep level of compassion and commitment to the students she works with in the SEB program. She builds, what stands for, what, I've just lost what S stands for. Student Emotional Behavioral, thank you, program. She builds strong relationships with the kids and does all she can to help them calm down and to feel safe and cared for. She never holds a student's aggression against them. They always get a fresh start and warm welcome from her. Mackenzie's understanding of how kids develop and the different supports they need at different development stages is fantastic and a wonderful asset to her team. Mackenzie always advocates for students to be included and have access to all of the opportunities available. She invests in their social and emotional well-being and does whatever she can to make sure that they are safe and know that they are loved. Let's give it up for Mackenzie Fuller. Next up, we have Matt Gates, who's over Information Systems. Matt Gates is a superhero endowed with IT superpowers. His coworkers joke that all you have to do is think about a problem with your computer and Matt will show up. It doesn't matter if it's the first or 50th time someone asks for him to help, he approaches each request with kindness and positive attitude. One of Matt's most commendable qualities is his thoroughness in completing tasks and projects. Every student, teacher, substitute teacher, and ESP knows and trusts Matt. Even parents will come to the office and ask for Mr. Matt's help. It sounds so simple to say he takes care of the school, but that really does not explain how great he is. Matt, who's your plus one? Oh, hi Harley. Thanks for coming with Matt and helping. Okay, let's give it up for Matt Gates. Next up is Deidre Giggs of Westland Elementary School, where she is the head secretary. Deidre. Deidre is always thinking of those around her. She anticipates the needs of others and works to help fill them. She always has a kind word and an offer to help anyone who comes into the office. She is quick and efficient in fulfilling teachers' requests and works to make sure the other ESPs have everything they need to be happy, supported, and success, and successful in their roles. Deidre helps students with their health needs and dispensing medication and distributing the elementary cure, school cure-alls of Band-Aids and ICE. She is always doing a million things at once, but takes everything in stride. She has never missed a deadline or failed to be exactly where she was needed. She makes time for others with genuine interest, care, and concern. Her demeanor has improved the office environment and everyone who visits the office can feel it. Congratulations, Deidre. Next up, we have Janie Hyde, who's from Student Support Services as an administrative assistant. Janie Hyde. While all of Janie's daily duties are accomplished at the highest degree of excellence and professionalism, it is Janie's generosity of spirit that makes all the difference. Student Services often meets with families in crisis when students are sent to a safe school, hearing, or put on the district's home and hospital program. From her very first contact with the parents, Janie is warm, welcoming, and has a kindness about her that is palpable. Whether it's recruiting her neighborhood Facebook group to meet the needs of a family with a critically ill child, or founding the school, the safe school hearing waiting process to a more family-friendly environment, Janie goes above and beyond her job description as an administrative assistant, which is indicative of the caring and kindness she emanates each and every day. Congratulations, Janie. We'd now like to recognize Andrew Minardi, who's a head custodian over transportation. Andrew. I want to start whooping at the same time, but I'd break the speakers. Andrew constantly strives to be the best at whatever task he completes. He is always the first person to arrive and make sure the building and grounds are in excellent shape. Andrew brings a sense of humor to the work environment and simply makes those around him smile. It is not uncommon for Andrew to show up at 2:00 AM during inclement weather days just to ensure the parking lot and other areas have been addressed by the time buses are ready to roll. His expertise and initiative are demonstrated on a daily basis. His mechanical aptitude in plumbing, electrical, general repair, and mechanical repairs is second to none. When the JEF staff need help with the delivery or directing someone to the correct location, Andrew always is willing to, is, Andrew is always willing and cheerfully helps out. Andrew sets a very high standard for himself in an effort to contribute not only to the transportation facility, but to the district at large. Congratulations, Andrew Minardi. Way to go, mom. I love it. Next up, we have Stacy Peterson from Fort Harriman Middle. Stacy Peterson. Stacy always makes sure things are done correctly, are done correctly, and never hesitate to follow up if she asks questions. She always meets the deadlines that are required of her and wants to learn everything she can about the procedures and policies of the district. At the monthly administrative assistant meetings, Stacy is willing to ask questions and, and make comments about what is being discussed. The other administrative assistants all get along with her and know that she will always treat them with kindness. Stacy is always happy and very pleasant to talk to. She is such a great asset to her fellow employees at Fort Harriman Middle and they love her. Let's give it up for Stacy. Next up, we have Jody Spencer from South Valley School. Jody Spencer. Jody is the spirit of South Valley School and goes above and beyond for the students, staff, and community. Jody's dedication is evident as she seamlessly transitions from planning student events to coordinating food donations for the principal's pantry, covering classrooms, collaborating with community establishments, or conducting bus duty, all within the span of a single day. She literally knows how to do everyone's job at South Valley. Her rapport with students is truly heartwarming and the staff love her. Jody goes out of her way to ask if anyone needs help and jumps at any opportunity with a smile on her face. What a nice smile. Her initiative to help and keep a positive culture at South Valley is nothing but remarkable. Let's give it up for Jody Spencer. Last, but certainly not least, let's give it up for Laurie Spitzemberger. Laurie. Laurie uses her intuitive mind to help streamline processes. She then shares those processes with custodians throughout the district. Examples include creating a simplified spreadsheet for tracking custodial budgets and creating QR codes to give applicants easier access to job postings. She has worked on getting paperwork translated into Spanish to better serve the growing number of Spanish-speaking employees and, and has produced 17 custodial training videos, which can be viewed at any location and with subtitles in any language. Laurie's range of expertise is, is extremely broad with few, if any, others being able to successfully complete all the duties she regularly does. When asked to complete a work assignment, Laurie will have it completed on time and to a very professional level. With her technical skills and her knowledge of custodial operations and energy and management, including district office administration, Laurie has become a very valuable resource, resource for custodial and energy services. Let's congratulate Laurie Spitzemberger once more. Now, if the audience and the board would all please stand up, let's, let's give one last big rouse of applause for these great people. If we can have our award recipients line up in the center, we'll take a photo here.
Can we have you come shake our, we want to shake your hands first? And then we'll all have a big group picture. So start, oh, sorry. Start here at the center.
Shake your cross. Yep.
Shake hands. Then we'll go out for a picture. We got to add more stuff to your collection.
Good job. Good job. I love IT.
Congratulations. Congratulations. It's awesome. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good grief, 2:00 AM.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you so much for being here. Congratulations. Well deserved. Thank you for coming to us. Congratulations.
Scrunch together, guys.
Thank you all so much for being here. I love the enthusiasm and support. We need to get this group to come back to more board meetings to cheer like that. It's great. Thank you. And we're so thankful for our education support professionals and all that they do. Lots of it is behind the scenes. Thank you for all you do. And thank you to the foundation for their support. The foundation are all volunteers. They're from the business community and and other members of our community who volunteer their time because they care about our schools, and we're super grateful for all the support that we get from the foundation. Okay, board members. Does anyone else have any recognitions? Ms. Dean.
I always have something to say here. I just wanted to mention, I think it's an amazing initiative. The West Jordan Middle School has started the Lyons Main, which is a hair salon in cooperation with students from JATC, and they're going to be offering low-cost haircuts once a week and starting next year. And the day and... it's to be determined, but it... there was the grand opening just this past month. So, I just wanted to shout that out. I love when schools and communities come together and, I don't know, have great ideas and act on them.
I'm glad you mentioned that, especially with foundation here, because the foundation has provided support for that, too.
And, do you know what? I have one more thing, too. So, the Sil of Biliteracy, there were about 320 students received their Sil of Biliteracy recognition, and about 80 of our seniors were able to pass with... pass this with help. And these... so, the Sil of Biliteracy is achieving a certain score on the WIDA test and anyway. So, I just want to recognize our Sil of Biliteracy students in our district. So, there are some students that are not ML students that receive a Sil of Biliteracy, but... Yeah.
Thank you. Other board members?
I have a couple.
Hey, Mr. Barnett.
I think it was last meeting or the meeting before, we recognized Copper Hills High School chess team taking... winning the state chess tournament. And I have an interest in chess. I was actually on a a state championship team in high school as well. So, I arranged for an opportunity to go out to Copper Hills High School, and I congratulated the team and the coach. Played a few games. I think maybe they took it easy on me because I was able to hold my own, but...
You can ask who won those games.
Yeah, I played two players. The first player beat me the first game, and then I beat him the second game, so we split. And then the second player, I beat him both games, but I think he maybe felt sorry for me, so... And the other thing I wanted to mention is that we had eight graduates from Kari Sue Hamilton School. I attended that graduation. And I really liked the way they do it there. I wish we could maybe implement that at some of our high schools. They... the family car gets decorated. All of the supporters line the school, and they drive the cars around the school with the graduate, and everyone cheers for them. It was really great, but I don't know if it would work at a... if there's 1,200 cars, you know, for a procession.
If I may, we actually did exactly that during COVID.
Did you?
We had graduation parades the year that we couldn't get together. And they decorated cars, so it's funny that you say that because... and it was quite fun. So, yeah, no, that's... And with eight cars, you really get to pay attention to each family, so that's fun.
It was really rewarding to participate in that and see some of our special needs students and their families have a fun, memorable success story. Yeah, it was good.
A few. So, this is such a fun time of year that we get to be in schools and hear the amazing accomplishments of students. I love going to the high school award nights and just seeing the amazing things that are happening. I was able to go to Copper Hills, and there are some incredible things occurring in our schools. And the very same night, I got to come to the Academy Awards here in this building. And it... I have never been before. I don't know if that has happened before, but it was mind-boggling, the amount of work that these students have done and the amount of preparation that they have for their lives as adults. This room was like papered in certificates that our students had earned, and it was really fun to see. And I heard such great feedback about that format. It was really fun. And I also got to visit a little at Fox Hollow. This last couple of weeks, they had their school play. They performed Willy Wonka. And side note, this is kind of funny, but I was a parent volunteer at Fox Hollow the year they decided to do Willy Wonka in 2020. And the spring of 2020, schools closed down and our play got shut down. And this year, some cute volunteer found this box labeled Willy Wonka costumes and said, "You know what? Let's do this." And so, it was really fun for me. I was over costumes. So, I got to go and be like, "That's the same Willy Wonka shirt or jacket that I put together." And it was really fun to see it come into fruition a few years late. And then also the French performance. It is so fun to see our dual-language immersion students in their element, speaking with each other, singing songs in the language that they're learning. They're amazing. And then just a quick shout out for the art shows. That was really fun to be able to attend. I got to go to the middle school award ceremony, which was great. And then high school's was just amazing work. These kids are such a high caliber, and it's been really fun to see their culminating events this month.
Thank you. Ms. Richards?
One quick one. I was able to go to awards night, too, at Bingham High School. And I am just amazed at how many students are receiving scholarships and help for their college career. Our own Mr. Dunford's son got the Pick and Shovel Award at Bingham. Loved it. And I was able to present a scholarship for my graduating class, so I'm always happy to do that. It was a fun night.
Very good. Okay, well, I attended Kari Sue's musical this year, Finding Nemo. And, oh, they just do an amazing job. They go all out, and every kid gets the chance to participate and be involved. And, super neat. Also attended... Bingham High School had their first Hopewalk. I know some of our other schools do one, but Bingham did their first one this year and had a Hopewalk and was able to participate with them in that. It was a great event. A lot of good students involved, people from the community, and a great opportunity to learn about some of the resources in our community to help students with... and families with mental health issues. I also attended the Unified Golf Tournament that we had out at Glenmore Golf Course, that we had schools in our district participate that are involved in unified sports programs, get to come out and participate in that. Another really great event. And then finally, the Entrepreneurship Academy, and that was held in this room. And our CTE department put that on, and we had students from the entrepreneur classes at different high schools come and had a showcase and got to present their businesses or their business plans that they'd come up with for their class. And that was great. Man, we have a lot of a lot of students in our district. A lot of them already have businesses up and running. And a lot of them had great ideas for businesses, potential businesses. So, that was super neat to see. Superintendent, do you have recognitions?
I would just mention, this is a time of transition, and I really appreciated the chance to attend the retirement dinner last week. It's always fun to say, "See you around." I don't want to say farewell, but "see you around" to those who have retired and are finishing up their careers. We have a ton of great employees in Jordan School District, and it's nice to be able to say "thank you" for a few minutes. And coming up this week, we have our graduations, and a lot of work is being done by teachers and counselors and parents and students to get across the finish line for some. And just a lot of preparation for those important ceremonies. So, thank you to all of those who are working hard to make that... make the most of that.
Thank you. Okay, our next agenda item is our public comment section. And we don't have anyone that's signed up tonight. There's one person, but that's... we're taking public comment on a few of our items, so we'll get to that one later. So, have I missed anyone? Did anyone intend to sign up or thought they signed up and didn't? There's... oh, there's some online ones. Okay. So, we will turn the time to Mr. Larson then for online comment.
Summer Bosch. Members of the Jordan School District Board, my name is Summer Bosch, and I teach in the Fine Arts Department at Harriman High School. Several weeks ago, I wrote to the Board Administration regarding the continuation of community pottery classes at HHS. I didn't receive a response to that email from any board members or administration, so I tuned into the live broadcast of the May 14th board meeting in hopes that it would be discussed. While unfortunately, the topic of community ed programs was never brought up, and I plan on advocating for resolution on this topic in the future, I continued to listen to the board meeting as I picked up my daughters from daycare and headed home to play with them for the evening. I routinely listen to board meetings and am generally interested in a variety of topics and understanding the why behind decisions that the Board Administration make. May 14th board meeting had several interesting discussions, from changing late start and early out times to reporting on female and male participation in sports as required by HB 420, the latter of which being the reason for my letter to you today. I was hurt, offended, and disappointed by some remarks regarding girls' equitable participation in sports and later on, their interest in things such as computer science and STEM. "Why should I care?" was the sentiment I heard as I watched my two daughters play. Maybe girls aren't naturally interested as much in sports and STEM. This statement received little pushback from the rest of the board and is something I've been reflecting on ever since. My three-year-old daughter has a wide variety of interests at her young age. She loves books, enjoys painting, always wants to be outside, is begging me to do swim lessons, and is a passionate Swifty. To be clear, none of these interests came... come naturally to her because she was born a girl. In fact, I dread the frequent request to play Shake It Off in the car. My youngest is just a year old, but her personality is really starting to come through. I'm curious what interests she will develop as she gets older. Maybe she'll be interested in things that my husband and I encourage her to try. Maybe she'll want to try a girls' football or participate in Girls Who Code, and maybe she'll be a Swifty just like her sister. I have so many hopes for my... for both of my daughters' futures. I hope that they will have... they have all the support of the world to do anything and everything that interests them, that they're presented with every opportunity that their male counterparts are naturally given, and that they never let men put them in a box. I hope they go to public school in a district that is actively seeking out ways to encourage girls to participate in things such as sports and STEM, spaces that girls have not historically been welcome in. I could present you with research and facts about why these statements are harmful and wrong, but colleagues of mine have already eloquently done so. Instead, I simply want to invite you to do better. And I urge the rest of the Board Administration to have the courage to push back.
Almost done?
A few more sentences.
Yeah, finish.
Push back on such rhetoric while considering the women and girls that you are elected to represent and lead. In your first... if your first thought is, "Why should I care?", or if your answer was, "Because the law says we need to", then I invite you to do some more research and listen to female perspectives and voices on the matter. Thank you for taking this time to listen to my concerns. Summer Bosch.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our public comment period. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda items? Or item?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda item.
I'll second.
A motion by Ms. Richards, second by Ms. Dean to approve our consent agenda item. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Can I get a motion to accept our consent agenda items A through E?
I move that we accept the consent agenda items A through E. Or is it D? Or E? Okay.
Oh, you're right. What's on this screen doesn't match what's on...
So, A through D and E?
So, is the recommendation to issue certificates for home instruction been taken off?
No. So, the cons... I have general business, approved consent agenda, certificates for home instruction, and board minutes. I have A and B.
We already did board minutes. That was for... Oh. So, you're right. It's... Sorry, I was looking at an older version then that had home instruction on there. So, it is A through D.
Okay.
Okay.
Should I restate that?
Sure.
Okay. I move that we accept consent agenda items A through D.
Second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Dean, second by Mr. Barnett to accept the consent agenda items A through D. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Can I get a motion for the first bid?
I move that we accept the bid for Harriman High School athletic uniforms and apparel.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the bid for Harriman High Athletic Uniforms and Apparel. Sorry, motion by Ms. Dean, second by Ms. George. Is there a discussion to that motion? Okay, seen none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Anyone opposed, say nay. Okay, can I get a motion for the next one?
I can do it. Um, I move that we accept the recommend, or the expenditure of white paper for ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and forty dollars.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Robinson, second by Ms. George to approve the bid for white copy paper for ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. Is there discussion to that motion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. Can I get a motion for C?
I move that we accept the bid for Facility Services Gym Sound System at Butterfield Canyon Elementary School.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Ms. Dean, second by Mr. Robinson to approve the bid for the gym sound system at Butterfield Canyon Elementary School. Is there discussion to that motion? All right, seen none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Okay, that passes unanimously. And finally, can I get a motion for bid D?
I move that we accept the bid for Facility Services Electric Stage Winches at Bingham High School.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Dean, second by Ms. Richards to approve the bid for electric stage winches at Bingham High School. Is there a discussion to that motion? You guys are getting off easy tonight. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. That motion passes unanimously.
We'll get him on another night.
Okay, we are on to our special business items, and our first up is, um, a recommendation to approve the negotiated agreement for our licensed employees. Can I get a motion, and then we'll go to public input and then discussion and action?
I move that we approve the, um, the twenty-four, twenty-five negotiated agreement for licensed employees.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion by Ms. George, second by Ms. Richards. And I will just give a, get a, give a brief overview of that. That negotiated agreement includes, um, salary level increases. It used to be called steps, but it's a salary level increase. And then also this year, we increased the distance between each salary level. Um, so we raised it from eight seventy-five to nine hundred. So if, you know, future salary level increases will result in a, in bigger increases in the future. Um, we also awarded the continuing education advancements, and then, um, we added an, an increase of one thousand, nine hundred and twenty, um, on top of the, the salary level increases, um, to the salary schedule. And that brings our starting pay to sixty thousand, four hundred, and I am super excited about that because when I started on the Board, starting pay was at thirty-four thousand. And I remember a, a report from the Utah Foundation came out and, and recommended that we really need to have starting pay at around sixty thousand, and I am just, uh, super proud of all the efforts that started before I got on the Board, the efforts started, and, and have continued to get that salary level increase, and I am thrilled that we have passed the sixty thousand mark now. Um, there, there was also, um, the district is paying a hundred percent of the premium increases for insurance for the value and star plans and eighty-seven percent for the traditional plan. Um, that's also a big deal because insurance costs have gone up dramatically, and so pleased that we didn't have to pass, um, much of that along to our employees. Um, is there anyone from the audience that is here to speak to this issue? Janet Sanders, welcome.
Not necessarily planning on talking tonight, but I did want to say thank you. Um, thank you for being great to work with. Thank you for listening to the needs of educators. Thank you for the increase in the amount, um, that does something for our veteran educators who have been feeling, um, that they, you know, are overlooked sometimes. It's wonderful to increase the salary for beginning educators. We so appreciate being competitive, um, but we also want our veterans to feel valued, and last year with the extra step for the twenty-year, uh, teachers and continuing that, and then this year, uh, increasing the amount between, uh, really has made a difference for people. And also covering the insurance is a, is a very big deal. So we, we understand the needs and why, um, you couldn't cover it a hundred percent for everyone on the traditional plan, but we feel like this was a really good, um, compromise, and just want to thank you. Um, we want to save the district money too, if we can. So, um, I've served on the insurance committee myself and understand those concerns. So anyway, just thank you. Um, we really appreciated working with you this year, and I think we were somewhat happily surprised with the smoothness of, um, coming to an agreement this year. So that is very, very, very much appreciated, and I hope it can continue in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. I will second that. It was a very smooth process this year. So thank you to the negotiating teams on, on both sides, Dr. Godfrey and, and Mr. Larson and, and those that helped negotiate and, and JEA. Thank you. It's good to have a smooth process. Okay, um, discussion from board members.
It was mentioned that, that the district is going to be paying for the increased, uh, insurance premiums and not passing that expense on to teachers or other employees, except I guess there was a, it was a hundred percent for two of them and eighty-seven percent for another plan. I also wanted to point out that that expense was not passed on to taxpayers. We didn't, um, we didn't need or choose to have a truth in taxation for those funds, and, um, I thought that was commendable.
And in full transparency, there were some costs passed along. There's, there's some changes in the benefit plan that the employees will have experience.
I, I did have a couple of teachers reach out because those changes were pretty dramatic, and they expressed the desire to change our plan more frequently instead of a bigger change. And I don't know if that's the feeling of association to other teachers or if other board members had received that. So just for the future, I don't know if that's something that we want to weigh in, but there was a huge, yeah, I'd like to hear.
And I should be having you state your name for the record.
Janet Sanders. I'm the president of the Jordan Education Association and a teacher at Mountain Ridge High School. Um, I'm not hearing that widespread, although there's definitely frustration with the increased deductibles. Um, but I think people are pretty understanding, and from my experience on the insurance committee, I do, I have seen that they do a pretty good job comparing, um, the plans offered by different providers and, um, different districts, and try to be as comparable as we can, but it's something that they do look at every year.
That's, I thought too, and so that was strange to me. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, um, all in favor of approving, did I take a motion?
Yeah, we have a motion.
I forgot who gave it. Ms. George, second by, Ms. Richards, I think so too. Okay. So we have a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five negotiated agreement for licensed employees. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Yeah, motion passes unanimously. Um, next, I will take a motion for the negotiated agreement for our education support professionals.
I'll make the motion that we approve the two thousand, twenty-four, twenty-five negotiated agreement with the educational support professionals.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Robinson, second by Ms. Dean to approve the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five negotiated agreement for education support professionals. And just highlights of that, um, steps were given for our support professionals, and then a cost of living adjustment of two-point-seven percent added to all the steps for that. And the same thing on insurance. Um, the district's paying a hundred percent of the premium increase for value and star plans and eighty-seven percent for the dish, for the traditional plan. Um, there were changes to the benefits, and then there were a couple of, of policies that were also negotiated with Jespa. So, um, Dave Bullock, would you like to come address this, and we'll have you state your name and your position?
I wrote it down, so I won't mess up here. So, all right. It's, uh, Dave Bullock. I'm currently the Jordan Educational Support Professionals President of Jespa, um, President Miller, the members of the school board, superintendent Dr. Godfrey, and Mr. Larson. As educational support professionals, we love our jobs and love working for Jordan School District. We love being part of the team that works to, hard to educate our children and proud of the excellent way the school, Jordan School District educates them. There are many who work time tirelessly and timelessly in their positions, striving for excellence and take pride in what they do. I am proud to serve and represent them. It has also been great to work with you, the school board and administration. We appreciate your efforts, especially in how thoughtful you are in caring for the employees of the district. One of the big concerns this year has been the rising cost of insurance, as we discussed, and the healthcare insurance, and we appreciate the efforts that the school board made to minimize and even eliminate increases in the premiums of certain plans. Thank you for serving on the school board. We know your job isn't easy, and we want you to know that your service is appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
I clapped.
Discussion by the board.
I'd like to make a comment. Um, a couple of days ago, I was watching the Indy five-hundred, and I've always loved the Indy five-hundred because growing up, um, my best friend's dad was a racer. And as I watched it, I just thought about our teachers and our support professionals. For every one driver, there's all kinds of people that are behind that driver, from putting the wheels on and putting the gas in, and to even the analyst for the race. And there's just a variety of people that are helping make that car go. It's sometimes we give the recognition to the driver that wins the race or whatever, and hardly ever we recognize the people behind the scenes that really make that car without that support. Um, none of those drivers could drive. And I just really appreciate the support professionals and, and how they help our teachers drive the vehicle, how you're really making an impact in, you know, the classroom and all the jobs that you do. And so I just wanted to pass on my thanks to, you know, our teachers for sure, but really the people behind the scene that makes the vehicle go. And you're just, you're part of what makes the Jordan District lead in every way. Thank you.
And I will add that the process, the negotiating process with Jespa was also very smooth this year. So thank you to those that were involved in that, that negotiation. Any other comments by the board? Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Robinson and a second by, um, Ms. Dean to approve the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five negotiated agreement for education support professionals. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Okay, that passes unanimously. I feel like this deserves a round of applause.
Thank you. It's one of the most important things we do as a board is, um, setting our budget, which includes how much we're paying people. It's important, so thank you. Okay, can I get, can I get a, our next agenda item is a recommendation to approve ninety-eight hundred South Elk Ridge Property Settlement Agreement. Marilyn Richards, do you have something for that?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Do we have anything further to say? I think we've discussed it very well. So I would make the motion to accept, um...
As good as it's gonna get.
That's true.
It's not worth celebrating, but it's as good as it's gonna get.
Yeah, we can't celebrate that. All right, let me, let me pull it up here. I'd like to make the motion to accept, accept the, um, settlement agreement on the ninety-eight South Elk Ridge property as stated.
I'll second.
A motion by Ms. Richards, second by Ms. Dean to accept the settlement agreement for the ninety-eight hundred South Elk Ridge property. Is there discussion to that motion? And for those of you that don't know, this is UDOT purchasing part of our Elk Ridge Middle School property in order to do the ninety-eight hundred South overpass. And we were in negotiations with UDOT for quite a while over this. So thank you again for everyone involved with that negotiation.
Construction's well underway.
Yeah, yes, it is. Okay, um, all in favor of approving that settlement agreement for the ninety-eight hundred South Elk Ridge prod, property, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Uh, next agenda item is superintendent's report. Dr. Godfrey.
Uh, there was a question about the seal of biliteracy, so I thought I would, uh, talk a little bit more about that.
Thank you. I made a big mistake, so I hope you'll clear it up.
Well, that was not the subject of my, uh, um, report, but I will, uh, you can chime in at any point. Uh, we have, uh, three hundred and ninety-five students who received the seal this year. Six students received it in two languages, which means they are triliterate. Uh, the languages are Spanish, German, French, Portuguese, Chinese, ASL, Russian, and Samoan. Uh, last year, we had two hundred and sixty-nine recipients, so that is a big leap forward. And the number's growing because we've been working hard to help ML students pass out of WEDA, because if they do, they count that for their English test, and then they can take the test in their heritage language. So that represents more students testing out of WEDA, having that support, and to, to have that academic language, that academic level of language. And for context, some other districts have thirty-five students. Some other districts have as many as a hundred and thirty. Um, actually, we had a hundred and thirty at Copper Hills alone, which is more than, like I said, some districts that had a hundred and thirty. So, not to compare with other districts, but in context, that is a huge number and represents a lot of effort on the parts of students and families and educators and district-level staff who are supporting students to graduate from the WEDA, but also to get credit for the languages that they speak. I've been challenged to try to do that myself, uh, because I lived in France when I was twelve, and, um, again later on, and have studied French, and I'm a little intimidated by that test, but I'm really gonna try, um, yeah, because it involves listening, speaking, reading, and writing, and, um, I have not kept up on all four of those skills. So, uh, these students make me want to really try to dust that off and see how well I can do. That will mean substituting podcasts and music in the car and phone calls for listening to some French, which I think would be good this summer. So anyway, I am proud of the efforts of these students and families and the district and school staff who've made this possible.
Okay, I just want to say, everybody, our district superintendent is modeling a growth mindset for all of us, doing, moving forward with something hard, and anyway, I am proud of that. Good for you.
I appreciate the challenge I got from district staff to do that, so.
I thought that would be your son. Did he take the EP test, too?
Uh, no, he, he went through sixth grade with it, so, yeah.
Five and a half hours my daughter sat for that one.
Five and a half?
Was a doozy.
Wow. And so July, uh, fifth, you'll be hitting refresh, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, other committee reports or comments by board members? Anyone have anything?
Audit committee has a couple of things. Um, Lisa emailed you two documents. I'd invite you to open up the first one, the risk assessment. So imagine a boat sitting on water, or imagine a boat that is potentially gonna sit on water, and we wanted to look through the bottom to see if there were any potential holes, leaks. Where is this boat gonna have a problem? Where might there be problems? So we asked our internal auditor to say, where might this district... So, we asked our internal auditor to say, where might this district have problems? Where are, where's the greatest potential risk here? They identified 22 areas, and you can see them listed at the first of the report, all of which I've heard one or another of us express at different times. I'm worried about fundraising. I'm worried about this and that. And they did a really good job compiling the 22. And then after their study, they, they broke down everything that was said and said, here are your top five most vulnerable areas. Here's where your risk is at its greatest. And that's the graph. And if you go to the blue chart right above the negativity meter, you'll notice that board members ranked, here are the top five among board members, which is very much board thinking. Cabinet rated theirs, very much cabinet thinking. Directors, like nutrition services, or IT, or transportation. Everyone kind of thought in their own little silo. And then they just said, okay, all combined, those are the top five. That's our weak spot. That's where the ship is most likely to have a hole. Now, that's the end of their report. They didn't necessarily go into details and said, here's the problems. They're just, this is a risk assessment, saying, where is the boat most likely to spring a leak? And now, it's the board's turn to say, I'd like to know more about that. So, my goal tonight was to just present this risk assessment to you. There are the top five findings. These are the most vulnerable areas of the district. This is, this is where you're most likely to have problems. We would invite you, as a committee, to ponder those. It is now our turn to investigate each one of those, all of them, some of them. I'm not going to say none of them because that's not an option. We will now begin to go over more specifically the potential areas to say, what's happening here? Questions, thoughts, comments?
Is this public information? These, this, these charts, these 22 things?
I don't know that we've made it public, and I've been kind of veiled in my comments.
Yeah.
It's not public right now.
We haven't brought, we haven't entered it into a public record.
Okay.
So, not hearing any questions, audit committee will now be considering, where do we start probing and asking and questioning? Given this list, you can see that we have been given a priority. We need to make sure that there's no holes in the boat in these areas. But if you would like to share your input, please reach out to any member of the audit committee and say, I'd really like to recommend we look into this, or that, or the other. Right now, this is just for your own consumption. Now, that leads us to, as an audit committee, we did have some questions about our P-card use. Purchase cards. There's a potential for fraud, loss. Are we using our P-cards? Now, if you've never really watched an audit, what happens, you'll notice, is they found some findings. So, about three paragraphs into their report, oh, sorry, sorry. Jump down to page two of their report. They, they go through their, their process, and then they say, here is a list of recommendations. So, the audit, the internal auditor, found some things and made some recommendations. They went to our staff and said, here's what we recommend. Here's what we found, and here's a recommendation. And our team, our administration, made a response. And that's what you see here. Number one, here's what we found. Here's what their response was. Number two, here's what we found. Here's what their response was. What we need to know as an audit committee is, are you content that the administration's response matched the suggestion, the level of concern? Are you, oh, I think that's exactly what we need to do. I'm content. They saw something. We were grateful that they saw it, and we made an adjustment, and I think everything's fine. Or, if you read a finding and then a response, and your spidey sense goes off and says, hmm, I'm concerned there. That's what we, as a committee, need to know. If you read the responses, the findings and the responses, and say, I don't think we're doing enough. I'd like to do more, please reach out to an audit committee member. And we will discuss it and seek more information. Now, there are some timing issues here. We're going to do this by such and such a date. And I will take it upon myself, as the audit chairman, to just do a follow-up to make sure that those deadlines were met. If anything is a concern, we'll bring it to the board. But we were relatively pleased with our internal auditor. This was their first report. This process went very smoothly. Very, very pleased with their professionalism. I think they've given us, the, the, the risk assessment was a great chart to say, here's where the boat potentially might leak. Not saying it is, but here's where it's most likely to leak. Now, let's make sure it's not leaking. That being said, I need to say to anyone listening, that I, as a board member, have full confidence in our administration. The boat is not leaking. But every organization needs to assess its risk and look at those areas where we are most vulnerable to make sure that the high-risk items are getting high attention. And I am very confident that that is happening in our district. But I wanted to report those two audit items to the board. In an upcoming audit committee meeting, we will be discussing the audit, the internal auditor's next steps. So, if you have any input, please see one of us, Nikki, myself, or Brian, or John. We do consider John a member of the committee.
I really appreciate seeing the, the P-card recommendations and, and our staff response. I mean, the specific people have been assigned. There's a date for when it'll be done by. That's very great work. Thank you.
Nikki, Brian, anything?
This list of 22 risk factors or potential risks, somebody might look at that and say, well, it looks like the internal auditors are just mapping out all the things that they can do for us. You know, just from a business perspective, they're saying, there's all these kinds, there's 22 different areas that, that you guys need to look at. Hire us, ask us, you know, so from a business perspective, someone might look at it like that. But I didn't get that feeling at all from the internal auditors. And also, the information that, that makes up those 22 items was all gathered from Jordan School District people. Yeah, so.
I've become a great fan of qualitative analysis. I very much respect the massive amount of data that they get and then how they analyze it so well. I watched that with our Portrait of a Graduate. This is just, it's very impressive to watch how well they handle the massive amounts of data they get.
One other, one other comment. Also, people might think, why spend resources, spend money on a boat that's not leaking? You know, what's, it, it sounds like a waste of money. But there's great wisdom in being preventative. Yeah, so, don't, I guess that's an opinion of mine, but I, I feel that it's money well spent, is looking for potential risks and making sure that it's not going to spring a leak, rather than springing into action after a leak has sprung, has, has occurred.
It is much better to prepare and prevent than to repair and repent.
One of my favorite charts that we were given is that blue chart on page four in Board Docs. I was really hesitant when I saw it because I was afraid that we would see like, oh, my gosh, like, everybody said this was the biggest problem. And when I saw that actually each group really prioritized these things differently, it made me feel proud of the work that we're doing as a district, that there wasn't a standout problem, that there wasn't like, here's the part of the boat that's on fire. And, and I think that that speaks highly of the management of our district. And just a huge kudos to John and his team, Dr. Godfrey, for really steering us well.
Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Thank you to our finance and audit committee. Nice work. Okay, other committees, other committees. Facilities next week. Okay?
So, I want to talk about what I heard at the last Salt Lake County Parks and Rec Board meeting. Just because I thought people would find this was interesting. So, there have been, well, as of, what was the date of this? It was May 8th. There were 54,000 rounds of golf played at county golf courses. And $1.4 million of revenue in April. Oh, maybe it was just all April, which is when people started playing golf. So, sometimes when people, I've heard a lot of comments from people saying, why do we have all these golf courses? They are like the cash cow of Salt Lake County Parks and Rec. 54,000 rounds in April and $1.4 million of revenue in April. And, and then I also have something more district-related, but then I do want to put in a plug, the My County Rec Pass. It goes live this Saturday, June 1st, is when people, the, people ages five through 18 who have gotten their My County Rec Pass, these five to 18-year-olds residents of the county, they will be able to ice skate, swim, use the weight rooms, use the free gym time at any of the county recreational facilities as of Saturday.
Don't expect them to be.
Don't expect who to be what.
Don't expect small groups. Expect large crowds.
I, I, I am believing that the outdoor pools are going to be packed.
Yep.
Which I think is fun. Yeah, it's going to be really fun. Okay, and that's, that's what I have.
Hey, other committee reports or comments?
Okay, I need to tell you about Utah School Boards Association. And we've had some really tense meetings lately. First of all, just a couple of things. There is new board member workshop every year. If you're running for the board and, and listening, that will be December 7th. And then existing board members are always invited to that, too. So, that's Saturday, December 7th, if you want to put that on your calendar. Leadership Conference for all school board members is January 9th through 11th. That's the one that is at Little America. And then, so.
You say the 9th through 11th?
9th through 11th, January 9th through 11th.
That's a little later than normal.
Yes, it is later than normal. You're right. And then, and then the big thing, we've been discussing finances on the Board of Director in our meetings, and we did vote to increase dues. So, each, each school district, school board and the state pays their dues to Utah School Boards Association. And we voted to add an inflationary increase to dues. And it's 3.8% increase this year. It matches what the legislature gives as an inflationary increase to the WPU. So, that will increase our dues this year by about $600 to Utah School Boards Association.
Ever much conversation about how that money is spent?
Yes, I can give you the exact breakdown. If you want, and I'd be happy to send that to you.
I need four unfolded packets in the mail.
So, that was so part of the conversation, was how can we save money? And so, there are a couple of things. One of them is less paper copies, more emailing to USBA members. So, watch your emails from USBA because you might not get stuff in the mail from them anymore.
Or I don't need four envelopes for the same thing.
Not, yes. Another one was no, lunch will no longer be provided at JLC meetings that are held throughout the year and during the legislative session. You have to bring your own lunch for that. They're also repurposing some of the swag, cutting down on swag. Another change was, we sent officers to NSBA Leadership Conference and Advocacia Institute, and they've combined that down to save some travel expenses there. So, those were, those were things that we voted on to start saving some money also. Yeah. And I, and it, it's, it's interesting because USBA, it's not like all one pot because there's Utah Superintendent's Association also, and then there's also Member Services. So, there's this whole Member Services arm where USBA provides like insurance services for districts. We're self-insured Jordan District, but a lot of the districts, you know, band together and, and use USBA to provide their insurance services. So, some of the, some things, like all the salaries aren't paid for out of dues. They're paid for out of revenues from their member services. So, it's not, it's not all cut and dry. But I will be happy to send you their, you know, kind of spreadsheet of what gets paid for and how.
I'm just happy to know you have the conversation.
Yeah, yep, absolutely. So, anyway, any other questions on USBA? Hey, well, the other thing we voted on just recently is Leadership Academy, which we just had at Zermatt recently and have had there a few times. It's going to move to Ruby's Inn down at Bryce Canyon next. That's not till next fall, so that's like a year and a half from now, but just in case you're wondering. Okay. That's it on USBA. Anything else on reports or comments? Okay, we have one more study session item and then a couple more close session items. So, we will take a break for about 10 minutes, 15 minutes. So, we'll start back up at 8:15 to finish our study. So we'll start back up at eight, 8:15, um, to finish our study. Okay, we are back into study session. It is May 28th, 2024, and we have all board members present. We have one last study session item, and that is a review of Board Policy GP 118, midterm vacancies on the board. We talked about this, um, briefly at our last meeting, and on Board Docs is a redlined copy of the recommended changes. And those are just changing, um, Board President to Board Executive Committee. Hey, does anyone have any questions on these changes? Are they okay? Any other changes anyone recommends?
It doesn't have to be exact, exact. Obviously, you can, you don't just give something verbatim, but it's just practice so that you try to give people an equal opportunity.
No, like a policy, that's just our practice. Gotcha.
That was counsel, that was legal counsel.
Understood, thank you.
And again, the last time this happened is when I was appointed. So if you want to go back to February 2017, you can listen to board meeting and all the interviews.
My first motion.
It was, yeah.
Wow, I'm going back.
Motion to pick me.
I motioned that we, we select Tracy Miller as the new board member. That was my first motion.
I remember it very well.
Remember who seconded it?
Is it you?
I don't know, but I want to claim that. I'll go back and listen.
Did you have a lot of people apply?
Yes.
Yeah, there was like eight, seems like.
Wow.
Okay, are you guys okay voting on this at our next business meeting then? Voting on these changes?
Yes.
Okay, great. That's the end of our study session then. So we will go ahead and take a motion to go into closed session. Yeah, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we go into closed session for character incompetence of individuals, property, potential litigation, negotiations, and security.
Motion by Mr. Barnett, second by Ms. George to go into closed session. Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Ms. George.
Yes.
Ms. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Dunford.
Yes.
I'm a yes, so we will now go into closed session. Thank you, everyone, and happy last week of school. Good luck to everybody.